All right, I'm gonna call the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Special meeting of the Hancock County Commissioners to order. Noting that we are meeting remotely via Zoom today. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm gonna move to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of adding an item for seat to promote. Part-time Corrections Officer Christina Newman, full-time Corrections Officer. Effective January twenty-second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other adjustments today? Hearing none, the agenda's in order. We move on to public comment, do we have anybody today that would like to make a public comment? I don't see anybody. So we'll move on to. Approval of our meeting minutes.
Move to prove the minutes of the January fourth regular meeting as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we've got our ARP report.
John?
John, are you able to?
Okay, I didn't know if Katie was going first.
She was on vacation, so I don't know if she has anything to report, we're gonna chat later.
Okay. All right, I will go, one of commissioners. So an update, we did. Meet with a couple of additional towns, we met with Gooseboro and that was their first committee meeting broadband committee meeting. So we tried to help kind of frame. What this project's about and how they can kind of move forward as a committee, you know, to expand broadband in their town. And then we met with the town of Surrey, they're they've been meeting, oh, I think they said since last June, so they're certainly a bit farther along and. Just again, kind of guided them, they're they're. I'll say it, I say it every time, every town's unique, they've got three different vendors that are in that town actually. So guidance there was they're gonna meet with each of those vendors right now and see where the gaps are and probably maybe maybe able to expand. So those are those the updates on those two. Our intent this morning was to provide you with at least one. Report, I'll call it a proposal, so to speak. For the town of Lemoine, they've got a good project, they're working with Spectrum. To expand. Broadband in their town. It it it, I'll say it's a good project, we ran into a snafu, we started comparing it against the. New, or I'll say the final ARP rules, and so I gotta reach out to them again today and just verify one last piece. But to give you an idea of that one, start talking, because I have another one I want to talk about. That one, that request is in the hundred thousand dollar range. For. Basically, it's working, it's a public-private partnership where they'll work with Spectrum, Spectrum has a design. And they'll finish building out to the areas that aren't built. And then the town itself is going to contribute. Monies, which I can show you on the report, and then, you know, their request is for this additional monies and that would basically. Looking at the project covered, you know, that town a hundred percent. Which is really what we're looking for from, you know, for help, so it's a good project, I gotta call Stu. And just clarify one last piece, I think he's on here today, so Stu, I'll give you, I'll give you a call in a bit. I think we can clear it up, it's just we're gonna talk to Spectrum real quick, so. The next one, yeah.
Excuse me, what's the timing on on Lemoine's project, I mean, is it sooner than later?
So it would be, I think we talked about this before. They have to, they still going through, I believe, they haven't signed a contract yet. So soon as soon as the contract signs, so this would be more commissioner from a, let's earmark this money. So that we know it's there, and then they they know they can they can go forward with the contract.
Okay, so Scott Atkins, how do we do that, how do we earmark, how do we do that?
Well, I think we have to have a conversation, and John and I have briefly discussed this, you know, commissioners. Oh, we all need to have a conversation as to how, what's your distribution method? I need what three different proposals on various ways to allocate it. I think there's a lot of flexibility to it, so yeah, as we start, as you start to receive. Some of these numbers, then I think we can take those numbers and apply it to some allocation methods and see. See if we can figure something out from there.
Well, when are we gonna have that allocation discussion?
I would say that I thought we may have that today, but it appears there's there's a couple little snags. Maybe when, and later on, we have Susan Corbett. So I'm sure John's gonna hang around for that, so in the meantime, maybe he can reach out to Lemoine if he gets that cleared up, that might be an easy one that we take a look at.
Well, I'm talking about allocation in general, as far as all applicants, I'm wondering, we can have that, whether we straighten Lemoine out today or not, can't we?
I think you can, but but again, I think if you have some idea what projects are gonna cost. John's got another one he wants to talk about, it's a rather, it's a large number, and I asked him just to bring that number to you today. If our exceeds any allocation, I think there are some questions as to whether there are other other monies available. Rather than funding the full amount from the commissioners. So again, I think as we, as you start, start to. There we go, as you start to take a look at these, I think you can kind of. Figure figure out a process, maybe backing into it or working collectively between between the two approaches. You know, if you want to say.
Generally speaking, generally speaking, gentlemen. I think it comes down to, maybe at this point. First in, first paid, or you let them build up and then make a decision based upon a group, and I think that's the discussion I'd like to see us. Address today, now, I understand that Stu, you're not in a real pucker, but nevertheless, I think it would probably be refreshing for you to know that we've set aside a certain amount, but. Because he's the first one in. I'm suggesting the process is is as they come in. And we feel that the our contribution is reasonable, we set aside that money and give the community the assurance that we're going to. Come across when they need it.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I was kind of under the impression at one point, we were talking a little bit about. I'll be honest, I kind of forget the metric that we are really using, maybe we were looking at how. ARP funds had been distributed amongst the towns and kind of using a little bit of that as a percentage to know kind of. How we're gonna make sure that it's equitable amongst the the different towns, knowing that we're gonna have to, there's gonna be some instances where. It's not all gonna get used in one town, it's gonna get moved over to another town, or I, but I kind of felt like we discussed that a little bit at at one point, but we didn't really. Decided on anything, obviously, it was more of a general discussion about how we're gonna make sure. Things are proportional.
My first reaction to that, John, is is that. We'll say hypothetically, Lemoine's share is seventy-five thousand, they need a hundred. And we tell Lemoine, well, if there's some twenty-five thousand left over, we'll give it to you, but that may not come for another year, you know what I'm saying?
From us, right, yeah, right.
So I I'm concerned that Lemoine's held up because they didn't meet the, they needed more than their their share. And we know sitting here that all communities are not going to take advantage of this, it's just like the hazard pay. People just aren't going to do it. And that's why I say that we've set aside a lump sum. And if we get close to that, now, that's that's our commitment to broadband in Hancock County, and. So anyways, I'd like to go back to somehow, once the snafu here is straightened out. We give Lemoine the assurance that, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna set aside a hundred thousand, when you need it. Call us, we'll take an official vote and give it to him.
I don't think anything I'm saying is really different than what what you're thinking either, though. I just think it's a matter for us, kind of internally, in a way, to kind of. See where the money's going, not so much saying, oh, wait, you're ten percent over what we're allocating to that area, the county. You know. We're not, we're not gonna do it, we're only gonna, so I mean. It's, we're a reasonable commission. We're gonna, we're gonna help the towns and get them what they need, obviously, there might be some instances where. We're gonna have to look to partner in other ways to get all the funds, which we'll see when. When we hear some of the other proposals where that's gonna go, but that's all I was, that's all I was kind of saying about. Kind of looking where we're putting the money. Just being cognizant of where the money's going, that's all.
John.
Yes, well.
How? You're gonna bring another proposal to us. What do you think the timing is on some of the rest of them, I mean? I agree with both statements here, and they're very similar, but, you know, it's it's. Gonna be harder to be equitable, if we're gonna use that word, among the towns, you know, without. Proposals, you know, knowing what proposals are out there, how far are we from that, John?
We've got two more in the works, you know, that you'll have there. You know, so like I said, some of these programs are just starting out, and so. You know, there's there's may not be a need for for cash, if you will, funding right now, and so that's hard, and other other. Towns, as Commissioner Clark said, are, you know, probably aren't gonna do anything. And so Paul, Commissioner, to answer your question on that one, it's. It's hard to tell, as we meet with these individual towns, to know who who is. Ready, you know, for the money in the next couple of months, besides the ones that we already know, like I said, there's probably gonna be. Three or four of those that I know of right now, others are starting to, I'll say, heat up a little bit more, and now that they know that this is around, and we can, you know. Offer a suggestion and solutions, and then others are, you know, a ways off, they certainly are, and so. Scott, I'm sorry.
Some of them might be a year away.
Well, they could be, right, they could be, and I think what we need to make sure that we understand is. This is one bucket of funding, right, Connect Main has other buckets of funding, there's other other groups out there that provide funding on broadband. And so what, kind of our mantra, if you remember going forward, was, we know we can't solve broadband in Hancock County with the money that we have. But we can keep these projects moving forward, and so the ones that we can keep moving forward is what we want to do. And I think as we, it's been suggested today, as we get some of these in front of you, you'll start to see some size and scope. And then maybe it's a matter of, okay, here's what we, you know, maybe we should get to start putting some timeframes around availability of funding. And then, you know, not that we have an end date to these projects, and we can talk about that a little bit, because some of these. We definitely need to wait until the seasonality hits, right, because there's a lot of conversations that need to go on with the seasonal folks. But I guess what I'm trying to get to is, you know, there's there's funding that you have, there's some time to spend it, and so maybe there's, you know, kind of, we look at it in groups of of funding and timeframes. And say, okay, you have.
Oh, you're not, you're not suggesting that we wait several months, that that Lemoine waits several months for us to.
Not, not at all, what I'm, all I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to fish out if there's a way for us to, you know, given a couple of projects. You know, develop some matrix or formula or something. You know, to make sure that we don't. You know, fund one big project that doesn't get as far as, you know, a bunch of little projects, that's all. And it sounds like these two projects, you know, you haven't talked about the second one, John, but. It sounds like from these two projects, they might be at opposite. Ends of the spectrum, you know, I don't know if that's true, not without hearing the second one, but. You know, maybe that can help us devise something in the short term to make sure that we don't do that, you know. And.
Yeah, I think.
We don't know what other funding is out there, we want to leverage that funding, not not, you know, keep it from happening, so. You know, that's that's where we gotta be careful, that's all.
Yeah, and I think Scott's put together, you know, a couple of matrices that say, you know, here's kind of the share, equal share amongst. Towns versus, you know, our money, matching our money, a percent of our money, so. There's definitely, you know, I think a good, we have a good basis to go by from that spreadsheet he put together.
Okay, so that's in the works, good.
When you think about it, I mean, if if. At a hundred thousand dollars, if we had thirty towns. Apply for that, at that amount, this three million, which is less than what we had ballparked for broadband. And so, and I don't think, we don't have thirty towns, do you, John, we won't, we won't be.
Oh, I don't dare say anything like. But, yeah. I'm sorry.
I don't dare say anything like that till we hear the second one.
Yeah, John, why don't we, let's hear the second.
Yeah, so, there's a, there's a, it's a good project down in Sedgwick, Brooklyn, have put together a utility district, so if the official name of it is Rural Broadband Access Corporation. And so what they're looking to do, and this is, this is common across, I'll say, the United States, there's definitely been, you know, precedence within Maine. Is they create a utility district between a couple of towns, and then what they do is go out and 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 own, build and own the asset of fiber to the premise and operate it. Now, do they, they don't operate it as a town, so to speak, they, you know, have subcontractors that do all of this. The build and the operations, but what they do is they they own the entire asset, and that way you can control. You can control service level agreements, right, you can control the billing, you can control the costs, so that's, that's a model that's definitely been successful on the United States, it's been working in Maine and a couple of locations as well. Which we can, we can refer to those in at another time, but, so what they're at, so now they're ready to start kind of the. The process, I'll call it, and they've been doing it for a few years, and now it just gets a little, you know, now the money comes to play. Where you have to go out and actually do, we call it fielding work, which is, you literally go out and look at every pole and work with the. Owners of the poles and the people that are on the poles, and it's it's field engineering is what it comes down to, and you you literally go pole by pole and take pictures, you know, but you gotta. You gotta do the engineering, because you're actually hanging another wire on a pole, and so. It's important, now you're talking to an engineer, so I feel I feel it's important anyway, but it's that design piece. And so this is where the, you know, the cost that can into play, so their request is gonna be in the range of eight hundred thousand dollars. And that is to get them going, you know, down the road to say, okay, here's how we're gonna build out this network. So when we look at those, back to the previous conversations, those are the things we have to start weighing, you guys, I put it on the commissioners, obviously, have to start weighing. Okay, how does this money get? Collectively and equitably across the different towns, and, you know, who needs what funding to finish these projects, so. There's, there's gonna be a variety of these different projects from, you know, public-private partnerships, which take on a couple of different viewpoints. Ownership, which takes on, you know, you start to own assets as towns, you have to do certain things, as you guys know, so. That is, that's gonna be that request, and we'll put together a formal, you know, kind of picture of that for you, but to get these in front of you today. That's what we wanted, that was our, that was our goal today, was to get some of these numbers in front of you and start having this conversation about allocations.
So, so that's a perfect example right there of, you know, one, one extreme and another. The, this project is just an engineering project, it's not a build project, it sounds like.
No, it is a bill, this is just the first start, this is for this first step, they're going, they're going through with building this network out. Yes.
So this is actually getting broadband to people's homes, this eight hundred thousand dollars.
Well, this is a start, this is, this is, it's a, it's a multimillion-dollar project.
So this really doesn't. Get it to their home, this is, is this, you know, it's a multimillion-dollar project, is this ten percent, thirty percent, fifty percent?
I don't dare say that until I, you know, research it some more, but.
Yeah, cuz it seems to me, you know, it sounds like there's a lot of money here, but really, there isn't, you know, when you look at, you know, the extremes. You know, it may come to a point where we have to prioritize, you know, the ones that are, that actually. Deliver broadband to people's homes as, you know, I don't know, I guess it depends how many of these, how many of this extreme are compared to the other extreme.
Yeah, the the only caution I would have on on that commissioner would be, you know, part of this is to keep projects moving forward. So they're all at different spots, right, so we could be keeping a project moving forward, and then in the end, you know, we don't know if if the. Service provider might pull out, or, you know, Connect Main doesn't, you know, provide service, you know, whatever it may be, so I don't. I don't know that it's always gonna be a deliverable of broadband, as much as it is keeping these projects moving forward.
Well, did you notice me flinch when I heard the number?
So just to reference that to the spreadsheet, you know, if you just take one allocation, which the simple one is 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 to match what the the towns individually receive for our. Lemoine is, Lemoine is an easy decision with regards to funding it, or the money available. But if I take both the town's allocation and the commissioners for Brooklyn Sedgwick, it's, it's just a little over four hundred thousand, so you barely have for what their request is. And I think those, those are the discussions that you're asking about, and those are the discussions that we need to have as we go forward. To find out, you know, what are the other options for Brooklyn Sedgwick?
And I, and and I, back to Commissioner Parity's point. Going back to Lemoine, Lemoine, I should have said upfront, you know, those are areas that. Spectrum does not serve today. And so that will give, you know, that unserved that we talked about, okay, underserved, great, they're gonna get it. And Brooklyn Sedgwick is, you could call it the poster child for, you know, this problem, in the United States, they have so little internet. And so it's, it's not like we're overbuilding something that's already there that's gonna solve it, this is like brand new because they need it. Right, so it's not like we're competing with something that's already on the wires, this is, you know, they do not have internet. And they do not have adequate internet across the board, and so those, when we look at these, kind of to your point of measuring. You know, what projects make sense, it's like, well, okay, well. We don't have one of these yet, but if a town came and said, well, we wanna build, you know, we wanna pay this this provider to build out the entire network. But we find out fifty percent of the town is already served, well. You know, we don't, we don't wanna use this money in that way, towards that type of project, with fifty percent of it is good, but not the whole thing, so. We really would, you know, as we, as we vet these, what we look at is, okay, who's, who's. Not being served in this area that they're talking about, or who is being served, right, the opposite of that, so we're keeping that in mind as well. But Brooklyn Sedgwick, that's why they, you know, they're out, they're doing this, is because there's just so little internet at all in their two towns.
I'm sorry, John.
I was just gonna say, so I just wanted to make sure, so. The utility district that they're talking about creating, is it pretty much primarily Brooklyn and Sedgwick, or are there other towns?
No, those two towns right there.
Okay.
And it is a, it is a legal entity now, they've done, they've done the paperwork, they've signed, everybody signed off on it, so it's a, it is a, it is a legal entity today.
So, do we know from the research you've done so far, John, how many examples like Sedgwick and Brooklyn? There are, I I don't mean in the entity, I'm talking about the service level, do we know, like, how much of Hancock County is in that? Position as opposed to the Lemoine position?
I can pull that data, yeah, I can, I can start looking at that, we have a couple of different sources of that, some of it is not accurate. But one of the other folks that have have done a report is the Northern Light Healthcare.
Yeah.
Has has created a report that I can also provide to you guys, I'll ask permission, I think they've already given it to us, but I'll double check with them. And that, their, their point was, you know, telehealth, right, so we can't provide telehealth to all these people, because they don't have broadband. And so they've got some good statistics on that for the, for the county as well, so as far as served and unserved, but.
Cuz that may help us, you you know, if if we know that Brooklyn Sedgwick is anomaly, and that most of them are like Lemoine, or halfway in between. That help, that sort of helps this discussion, you know. I don't know what my fellow commissioners feel, but.
John, isn't that kind of, that's kind of our point of the mapping, correct, to understand?
Yeah, yes, yeah, and that's, that's, then that's when I say challenges, you know, some of the challenges is with the, the, you know, the federal data is not accurate.
And how, what's our projection to have a better idea, mapping-wise, like where we're, where we're at, like how long do you think that process is gonna take to?
So we have, we've pulled all the, all the federal data, we can show you those maps. One of the next meetings, I think we talked about it anyway, in February, to show you what we have, what we like, that's, that's. One layer, so to speak, what we've, what we also do is, you know, like, in Lemoine's case, right, so they have provided a map from the service provider, that says, yeah, we don't serve these these streets. Right, and so now we can show you, okay, here's, here's what's served, and here's what, you know, the service provider does not serve, and so bang, there it is, right? So, and then, and there's other projects like that that have been down the road, so there's been work on mapping that, you know, other consultants have done, that are more than willing to provide us that information usually that we can get.
What might be interesting is if we bounce that, that kind of information off, you know, even before. It comes to us, bounce that kind of information off Scott Atkins. Spreadsheet, and, you know. You two sort of discuss what makes sense, because. The map alone is tough for me to make a decision, as are the numbers alone.
Sure.
And John and I have had this discussion already, and we're kind of already sort of unofficially working on it, so great segue. Which is, we call it the grocery list, to take a look, you know, this town X, where do they stand, are they going to need this? Town B may need a little bit over, and start projecting where our needs are, so that you, we can help you better plan on how to, on how to use and allocate these funds. So you you may be able to find another, I don't know, a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand for the Brooklyn Sedgwick project right off the bat. And so where does that put us, and then we have to lean back to John to say, okay, what kind of do you plan to develop? And how much of a commitment and how committed does this have to be in order to move it forward?
Yeah, and, you know. You know, for me anyways. You know, recommendations from our consultant and our administrator are kind of important here, because they're the ones that are. You know, dealing with this on a day-to-day basis, so that kind of information would be really useful for me.
Good, that's the direction that that John and I have discussed, pretty much. Taken as part of this project, yeah.
Did we?
Anything else for us?
Did we lose Commissioner Clark?
Think so.
We did lose somebody, I don't know. I don't see.
I think we lost them.
Katie, is there anything you want to add to the discussion?
You know, the only thing I would say is, obviously, this is really, really complicated, and I think you're getting into the the most complex piece of this, right, how to allocate these funds. I think, and I'm sure John has this, but I I would like to hear, like, what happens if if that eight hundred thousand isn't available, does it stop the project? And have they looked at, at this point, all of the the funding mechanisms that are available, does this lead them to a grant, right? And I'm sure you have that, John, I just didn't hear it, so that's just sort of where my my thought process was going.
That's, it's a good question, Katie, and that's, that's part of when you get the presentation, right, well, we'll go down through those steps of, you know, on this, these particular projects, where are they funding, and. You know, again, we can go back to Lemoine, Lemoine is a, an example of, you know, here's, here's what the total project cost. Here's what the service provider is gonna put into it, here's what the town's gonna put into it, and that's what, that's what this map matches, right, so same, then it'll be the same with. You know, as Connect Main starts to roll out their funding process, right, so, okay, what we're trying to do, well, we're trying to match for a planning grant, we're trying to match for a bigger infrastructure grant, so, yes.
So the Lemoine piece, just to, now that you brought up Connect Main again, the Lemoine piece. There's no Connect Main being figured into that number currently, is that correct?
Currently, yeah, 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 and those windows, again, part of that's gonna be, you know, the challenge of when windows open. What we don't know, as we've said about before, and Susan's over here, so I don't, I don't want to take up her time, but. The. What we don't know is, you know, there is an infrastructure grant window open currently with Connect Main, we don't, you know, with the new money that's coming in this year, we don't know what the new structure's gonna look like, what the timing is of those, those windows. We don't, you know, with the new money that's coming in this year, we don't know what the new structure is going to look like, what the timing is of those those windows for for uh funding.
Yeah, because it's sort of a chicken, chicken and the egg thing, you know, they're they're probably seeing what the county is gonna do for communities and we're trying to, you know, because they're trying to stretch their money as far as they can, which is what we're trying to do. And I'm I'm just trying to wrap my head around how we do that.
Yeah.
Possible.
Yeah, no, I think it is. And I think that's why we, you know, I keep going back to keeping projects moving forward. That's what this funding can do. Right? This funding, when you look at it, it's great if we can solve it in some areas, that's fantastic. But it's really keeping these projects moving forward because they're lengthy and they can be expensive.
Um, Donna Bianetti would like to make a comment. Can we have her? Donna, are you there?
Hi. Hi, good morning. This is Donna Beninati. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate um the time. I just wanted to add a couple of comments about our project and and what's really different about it. If you look at Brooklyn and Sedgwick. That really across, if we compare the unserved premises across all of Hancock County, we have eighty six percent of premises unserved. And and what I mean by unserved is we have folks premises that have no internet at all. There's no ability to to get anything. And then we have the rest of the folks that don't even get, you know, twenty five, three um up and down. It's it's pretty serious. We um you know, we we have nothing here. And the why the the project is why we're asking for perhaps more money than some of the other towns is that we're starting, you know, we need to start and build something. And what we're building is we're building a, and we've created a professional organization. We're doing what all the big uh corporations do. We're hiring contractors and and subs. We also have a team of professionals that were all volunteers, but we know that it's important to you know, bring on board specific consultants and organizations to uh build this, to operate it and to provide the long term service because we don't want to get into the business of you know, day to day hands on running this. And what we're building is that professional organization. We are creating a sustainable operation for long term growth. And what I mean by that is the purpose of these two towns, Brooklyn and Sedgwick. Joining together by interlocal agreement and creating a nonprofit rural broadband access corporation is to set a stable and professional organization where we can then expand our service across other towns within um Hancock County. And that's our goal and that's our objective. You know, we're doing the same thing that the big corporations do, but we're going to, you know, we want to own the the network. Um, there are, there's income that's derived from, you know, leasing out our dark fiber to other organizations such as you know, cellular service providers and large corporations, and we can um charge fees for those. That's why the big corporations want to own all the fiber. They want to own this because big money isn't leasing the fiber to the cellular provider. So I I did want to just say that and and I know it's a big number and it might look very scary, but we have a full financial plan and a full model that we're working against. And this is considered seed money for our project. We are planning to apply for the Connect Main Grant that's open now. Uh, we'll probably, you know, we have a certain a a number that we're going to ask for from Connect Main. Right now, they only have fifteen million available in this grant round. Um, in the next grant round, there'll be more money and we'll apply for that as well. So we have a layered approach to financing, but we need to start. And the money we're asking for now is to do those poll surveys to understand, you know, what we and and we have, you know, we know who to contact for permits and licensing. I've been in in touch with Maine DOT. Um, and we also need the engineering design. And this is going to take several months to build before we can even start to build it. But as I said, we're taking a very thoughtful and well planned financial approach to build sustainable operations for an entity that can support numerous towns across the Blue Hill Peninsula. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And and Donna, just because we've not met, are you're you're uh representing this entity or one town or the other? I just don't know where where you fit.
Oh, sure, sure. I'm sorry. So um I'm the on the Board of Directors for the Rural Broadband Access Corporation. I live in the town of Sedgwick. I was also the uh Chair of the Broadband Communications Committee in Sedgwick. And I'm also the the Secretary and Treasurer of Rural Broadband Access Corporation.
Which is this new entity?
Yes, it is. And it's a new entity formed by Sedgwick and Brooklyn. We have the way our interlocal agreement is designed. It has an on ramp to onboard other towns very easily within to this project. Uh, you know, we welcome them and should they decide to, you know, to do that, it's a simple process. Um, you know, with a simple um abbreviated interlocal, like I'm certainly happy to share the interlocal with you. We have, you know, bylaws established and um, you know, of the the organization is really formal. We have a partner or build partner that's willing to work with us.
Okay, and you've mentioned uh a couple of times the 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 notion of other communities joining you. Are there, have you done research? Are there are there entities in within Hancock County that are in your proximity that are candidates for this? Or is are they a totally different?
Yes, y- yes, they are. They are on the Blue Hill Peninsula. Now, they haven't, you know, they may have an interest. They're waiting to see how we do, I believe, and and what we build. Um, so we do have neighboring towns that are in the same situation that we're in, but we feel that with the model and the financial structure we've created. Um, we can get there faster and and move move everything forward and and they are welcome to participate.
Because here's why I'm asking that question is that, you know, this is a big nut that we're talking about and this is that, you know. And we don't, you know, we're going to deplete funds quickly if we if we have to, you know, do multiple entities as opposed to one. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Understood. Yes.
Thank you, Donna. Um, we do need to move on because we have Susan Corbett waiting here to do a presentation. Susan, are you are you here?
So, good morning, everyone. Oh, go ahead, John. All set?
Yep.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Susan Corbett. I am the Executive Director of the National Digital Equity Center. Um, and full disclosure, I am on the board of the Connect Main Authority. So I love these conversations. These are great. And um it's nice to see all of you, you know, um, uh, cracking this problem and trying to move forward with it. So today we're going to talk about um digital equity and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen if that's okay with everyone. All right, one, here we go. All right, you see that screen now? There we go.
There we go.
All set? All right, let me just pull this back up. Nope, there we go. Okay, so um so the National Digital Equity Center was formed in two thousand eighteen with a goal of closing the digital divide here in Maine and across the United States. Um, we're going to talk about what that all means um throughout this presentation. All right. So first what we're going to do is we're going to talk about what exactly am I talking about, right? What is digital equity and what is digital inclusion? So digital inclusion is the condition in which all individuals and communities have the information technology capacity needed for full participation in our society, democracy and economy. We know that when the pandemic hit, we saw how deep the digital divide was in local communities and across the state and across the country. Students who weren't able to connect in the Department of Ed scrambled to get devices and MiFi devices into the hands of of those that needed a connection. Sometimes um families didn't have that connection because there was no broadband available or they couldn't afford it, or there wasn't enough of a broadband connection to support everyone who had to be up online um for school and for remote work. We were concerned about remote workers for the same reasons, no broadband connection, um not enough of a broadband connection or in the remote worker case, maybe no on uh no device in order to connect as a remote worker. And then the final was that older adult organ um uh population that was already battling isolation and loneliness. And then we had a stay at home order. And for many, they had had did not have an internet connection, a device or the skills to learn how to um participate in um video conferencing and other ways that they could connect with their um their loved ones or their healthcare providers. We know that digital equity is necessary for civic and cultural participation, employment, lifelong learning and and essential services. We achieve digital equity by promoting digital inclusion and digital inclusion includes affordable broadband, affordable equipment, digital um literacy training and public computer access. So we're going to talk about those today. I believe that all infrastructure projects should have a digital inclusion and digital equity plan writing alongside of it. And that plan should be of addressing those digital inclusion components. Um, also promoting community advocates such as um um folks like yourselves um and and understanding broadband adoption in their communities. When you're writing a digital equity and digital inclusion plan, or if you're just trying to build out infrastructure, addressing affordable broad broadband is a is an important issue. Is there a plan for low to moderate income families that cannot afford that internet connection? We just came out of the um the FCC Emergency Broadband Benefit. It's now the Affordable Connectivity Plan. That program is for um load, low income families to get a discount for broadband. And so that that new discount is thirty dollars per month. Sometimes, though, that that's not enough. And when you're building fiber connections, you could be talking, you know, sixty, seventy or more dollars per month. And that broad that if the family qualifies for the ACP benefit, it still might not be enough in order to get them connected. So something for all communities to be aware of. Is there a plan to identify community members that need equipment, laptops, desktops, tablets? Um, we have a program here in Maine called Give IT, Get IT. They have, um, you, they're typically, they typically um provide libraries with low or no cost computers. We work with them on our on NDEC's Affordable Equipment Program. I'll talk a little bit about that as we move on. Digital literacy, so um providing classes. Um, the National Digital Equity Center provides free class, free digital literacy classes a- across the state of Maine. We've raised about five million dollars to provide those classes to all Maine residents. People can take as many classes as they wish. Um, and um we our funding will go on at least for the next um two to three years. People are at different levels with digital literacy. You know, when I think of my early computer years, it was over forty years ago when I learned how to um turn a computer on, learnt how to um Windows first came onto the scenes. We had to have do commands on it. You know, forty years later, I'm still learning, you know, I I there's because there's always new programs. Um, new new components of software service, of software programs that I didn't know before and I need to know now. So it's a, you know, I'm often asked, how long will we have to provide digital literacy? Probably forever because there's always new um new services, new app applications. If you think about your own internet use from ten years ago or five years ago, you'll 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 realize that you, you know, that you've done a lot of advancing over the years. We do a lot of surveys for community and this is sort of a snapshot and of many of our surveys. Um, we know that when people are taking classes, they're they love to learn how to cut the cord, right? So if you're bringing in fiber, you can you get rid of your cable connection? Can you get rid of your satellite network? So ninety four percent of our students, when they're taking their first class, want to learn about cutting the cord and how to do video streaming. Um, then next in line are all of the workforce um skills. So the Microsoft Word, Excel, QuickBooks. And then you start to see it goes down into internet safety, um understanding how to use your computer or your device. Uh, we have done a lot of connecting to family and friends and to healthcare providers with the different video conferencing platforms. And not surprisingly, social media is at the bottom of our of our of interest. And mostly because it's pretty easy for people to figure out how to get up on Facebook or Twitter or LinkedIn. When you're looking at your plan or digital equity plan for your community, is there public Wi Fi? Are there places like libraries and adult education locations that have computers and internet available? We've often heard of libraries, you know, in the parking lot after hours, people in their cars accessing accessing um internet. Um, but also they need to, you need to know where people can go, that there's actually a computer. If they don't have a computer at home, is there some place that they can go that they can um a- apply for a job or um um have a video visit or anything that um that that would enable them to participate in digital um digital services? And then are there community volunteers that can promote digital inclusion efforts? We work with a lot of um libraries, adult education in Hancock County. We work with all of the adult education programs. Um, many of your libraries, older adult organizations, um yeah, to to help us promote classes um to get people signed up for um an affordable device. When you're doing a digital equity plan, it's important to understand what a T grade is. So when we're talking T grade, if you had a community that broadband was available to um a hundred different homes. Um, w- we know that not everyone subscribes to broadband. The number one reason that they don't subscribe to broadband is affordability. The number two reason is tied in its affordable equipment and digital liter- digital skill um literacy skills. Do all homes have a computer? So I did ran the statistics for Hancock County. So you've got a twenty one plus thousand households. Of that, twenty thousand eight hundred and fifty one have a commuter. This this information is off of um US Census American Community Survey data. Um, we're looking, we're waiting for the new numbers to get um uh to be available uh through two thousand twenty. But this this is around two thousand eighteen. So there's a little bit of change, but it's probably pretty consistent. Um, eighteen thousand plus have a broadband connection. The family median income in Hancock County is forty three thousand. Um, you have about seven percent of your population that are below the federal poverty guidelines. So that is something that you have to take into consideration as you're looking to build broadband. Um, broadband projects throughout you can look throughout the county. The National Digital Equity Center writes digital inclusion, digital equity and digital inclusion plans. As mentioned before, we offer those free digital literacy classes. They are in, there are three different um course curricula for work and business. Those are all of the Microsoft classes, Outlook, Excel, Word, PowerPoint, Publisher. Um, QuickBooks. Um, for small businesses, we hold a WordPress class to build a website. Um, we do um classes in Aging Well With Technology. These these classes were designed pre pandemic with a team of older adult experts across the state in helping our older um citizens learn how to use technology. And it includes classes like identifying fraud and abuse, um identifying fake fake news, protecting your online presence, um internet safety. You just because you're on the internet doesn't mean that everything is right and everything is safe. So we do a lot of classes around that for our older um our older communities. Um, there are there are um classes on health, uh using healthcare apps to monitor your health. Um, things like monitoring blood pressure, diet, um uh exercise, et cetera. Um, and then um video conferencing, as mentioned, for family, for friends. We worked with a lot of families at the onset of the pandemic of teach, helping the families and their loved ones connect um using various um video conferencing platforms. Um, we also did a lot of teaching for folks learn to learn how to video conference with their healthcare providers. Um, an interesting statistic in healthcare is that um in the first year of the pandemic, telehealth in telehealth visits increased thirteen thousand percent across the country. That's um in for a state like Maine where we're so rural, that's a that that's wonderful. And, you know, to continue doing that for our um uh community members that may have a lack of transportation or you need to see a specialist and need to travel, being able to do telehealth visits is a is a is a plus. Um, we offer free devices to low to moderate income individuals. We are funded for this program under the Maine Office of Community Development. Um, those devices, we have uh tablets that have cell connectivity for folks that are not able, that do not have an internet connection at home. Um, we have refurbished laptops and desktops working with Give IT Get IT. Um, if the, if a, a student does have an internet connection at home, we will give them one of the laptops or desktops if they complete five hours of classroom instruction, including internet safety, will issue a certificate of ownership for that laptop and desktop and they can keep the device. Um, we have a partner affiliate program. We're working with a lot of communities, adult educations, libraries, where um, they may have the classes on site. Our instructors pre-pandemic were going from location to location. Um, after pandemic, we moved those classes to an on, online interactive platform. The classes, class sizes are small. There's usually no more than ten students. Um, they, the instructor is live so that there's a lot of interaction going on throughout that class. Um, when people started moving back into physical space, we then partnered with those organizations to hold those classes online. So it might be a town office, it could be a library, it could be a community center. Um, we have a facilitator, the, the location would have a facilitator onsite and then we'd bring in our instructors over Zoom to provide those classes. We also have a volunteer program. We have over seventy volunteers right now across the state that are helping um, folks on the local level, um, provide that one-on-one assistance. Um, sometimes it's in person at, again, like at libraries, public places, or it could be over, um, over, over Zoom. Is this, so the, you, you, data matters, right? In any project, especially when you're, when you're doing um, any grant work or funding from, from, from government um, sources. So all of our, all of our services are free. But free, I like to say free is not free. Free means that you must register through our enrollment, a registration portal. And all that information is confidential. It is behind a firewall. But allows me to do these type of statistics, that sixty-seven percent of our students are fifty years and older. Um, twenty-seven percent or seventy, and my favorite number is eight percent of our students are eighty and older. And that tells me that if somebody wants to learn, they can. Um, forty-one percent of our students have a high school diploma or less. Twenty-eight percent are unemployed, although I think that number just went up last month into the low thirty percent. Um, thirty-four percent of our students are retired and forty-eight percent of our students have a family median income of thirty-four-nine or less. This tells us that we are reaching Maine's most vulnerable population. With all um, projects, we need to measure outcomes. And so um, the National Digital Equity Center works with consultants to help us do that. Um, and that's in process and will be in process over the next few years. But does digital literacy training increase workforce skills? Um, which increases employment, but employability and may increase their family median income? Um, does it improve their job-seeking skills? Um, does it increase access to educational attainment? When you take that first online course, does it give you the confidence to take a, a course um, offered through either an adult ed program or a, a post-secondary educational facility? Um, in aging in place, can older adults remain in their homes as they grow older with the use of technology? Does it reduce isolation and loneliness? And does the use of technology improve health outcome? So those are the things that we're tracking um, here at the National Digital Equity Center. Um, I'm available. This is what I do all day, every day. So happy to talk to any community or any broadband team um, in, in your county. Um, and you know, I'll put my contact information up in the, the chat and I will share. I'll send John a copy of this PowerPoint presentation so that you all have a copy of it going forward. And I'm happy to take any questions um, from any of you.
Susan, can you put the screen back up? They had the statistics for Hancock County residents?
Yep. This one here?
Uh.
Yep, there you go.
That's the one, yes.
Yep.
John, Sue, and Donna, do these numbers surprise you? I mean, is this consistent with what you believe Hancock County represents with regards to broadband?
Um, yes. And the caveat is when you see eighteen thousand broadband connections, remember this is a national, the uh, statistics, um, that forms that people filled out, so they put broadband. So part of that could be a bit misleading, because then you get into is it adequate broadband? Right? So we're not talking about is it, is it adequate? And so I have broadband, so I can answer yes to that question, but is it twenty-five-three? Is it ten over one? You know, is, is it consistent enough that I can use it? So I think that adequate broadband is, is a far different number than actual broadband connection. That's what I'd have to say about, about these.
I, I, I agree with you, John, on that. And, and you know, remember, for those same reasons, someone's checking a box off, right? That's why um, um, doing speed tests on the local level is so important. Um, I'm sure John's been talking to you about that and trying to get as many of your community members to do that. Um, so it, it, those, the local statistics matter. This is just sort of a snapshot, right? But it gets you, um, it, it, it just sort of helps you start to look at your demographics and the, the, the people that you're going to be serving.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, sorry. Hi, this is Donna. Um, I just wanted to reiterate what John had said in terms of adequate internet. So, you know, again, I, I'm not sure where these numbers came from, if they were an online form that people filled out over the internet or if it was a, you know, a paper form. But um, you know, in terms of adequate internet, I'll tell you that in our area that our incumbent provider does not provide any more DSL service. And you can't get that. We have people that, you know, just can't get any service. If you're paying for a twenty-five-three connection, you're lucky if you get six over one. Um, so the way that I, the only way that I'm able to get on my internet is to use a hotspot provided by employer, my, my employer. But I would imagine that many people, you know, in that medium family income range, don't have employers that will provide them, you know, with hotspots or VPN connections or other resources that I may have that, oh, yes, I can make a, you know, a six over one internet connection work, but I have multiple, you know, costly resources to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this statistic for me is very eye-opening. You know, the question is, can we believe it? Because this shows that eighty-four percent of people in Hancock County have service and it shows that there's only a thousand, a little over a thousand unserved. So that's a little different than the premise we were operating on. So that's why this is very interesting. You know, the question.
There's fourteen hundred people in Sedgwick in, in Brooklyn. And that represents the people that don't have broadband according to this, uh, this statistic. And, and so, yeah, I guess we'd have to take this with a grain of salt and.
Yeah.
You know, you know, okay.
The local surveys matter, right? And so you, you do, you should take this with a grain of salt. But you know, go back to what John's saying, this does not mean that when someone's checking that box on that, that survey, um, the American Community Survey, which comes out, you can do it online, you can get a paper form and it comes out every so many years. When that happens, some, you know, people are checking off that box that they have broadband, not that they have good broadband.
Yeah, no, I get that, but even if you double or triple this, this is still eye-opening.
Okay, so John, I got a question for you. Do we think, so we think by the next meeting, uh, we'll have the, uh, we'll have the Lemoine uh, ask ready to go?
Yes.
And then where is, where are we going to be at with Brooklyn and Sedgwick? When's the next time we're gonna?
Yeah, you'll have that, you'll have, you'll have that one as well. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have both those. And what you'll get the um, presentation, if you will, ahead of time, so you can look at it and, and see how we're going to present it to see if that makes sense or if we need to make changes.
Yeah, and, and with that, you know, goes back to the work that, that you and Scott are doing. Because it would be, it would, would be remiss if we just said, okay, here's two, fund them fully. That's a good way to go through this money and, 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 you know, two weeks.
Right, so real, real quick, I mean, that's exactly one of the reasons why John and I wanted to kind of break this bubble today. Right, that number, you know, get that sticker shot, rip the Band-Aid off, whatever. And um, yeah, so I think John and I now just need to sit back and discuss kind of what this conversation developed. What are, what are the commissioners' alternatives? What are, what are the options? What, what does this do? If you don't do it, what does it do? If you do this, what does it do? What can we do? What, what other, what other ideas can we use to, you know, help push Brooklyn and Sedgwick along? You know, one, one idea that comes to mind to me is, uh, you know, maybe there's some sort of an economic, uh, uh, grant possibility or, or looking at it, uh, you know, some sort of, uh, self-county finance development. I don't, I don't know, but those are things that I think we need to look at, because they're talking about, as she said, they're talking about having assets and talking about having a business plan, having finances. So there ought to be the ability there to, um, you know, help, um, help pay for this, maybe not right now, but supply some cash flow, so.
All right. Um, all right, so next up is item number four in the agenda, is Tim at the jail online?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Tim, go ahead.
Uh, I have three things. We've been lucky lately. We've had, we've had some interest in the facility and we've been able to hire some individuals. So I'm requesting to approve the hire of Kristen Barrett of Frankfurt as pat-time on-call as needed practice officer with no benefits at step nine A effective January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Secondly, I have request to press approval to hire Galen McDonough of Frankfurt as pat-time on-call as needed practice officer with no benefits at step nine A effective January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And the third thing is, um, after a lot of discussion, we have a pat-time officer working out very well there, looking to go full-time. So looking to vote Christina Newman to full-time with benefits. Um, at step nine A effective January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
Oh.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Sheriff, you're next up.
Good morning. Uh, first item that I have is request permission to re-advertise for open patrol positions. Uh, I submitted a document to you. What I'd like to do is add an addendum to this where we can advertise this, where we can um, hire at a higher rate than step C, which has really been the practice for quite some time. The rationale for that is that it is happening uh, at other agencies here in the county and statewide. Um, the last time we had permission to advertise for open positions, we had four applicants. One was in Academy. It was just out of the Academy. Um, and before we even had a chance to talk to that person, they were, uh, they were hired by another agency. The, the piece that goes along with that, that would have been a forty thousand dollar expense uh, to the county. And I'm really not a fan of spending forty thousand dollars out of those reserve accounts to do that. So I submitted a document to you that would show you where the current contract is, twelve A for new hire. Uh, step C, the difference between those two and where we would be if we're allowed to advertise and hire someone at the, the ten-year level. Uh, those funds would not affect the budget this year, because the two other positions that we would be hiring, even at step ten, would be less than uh, what was budgeted for two of the open positions. So um, I'm asking for permission to go back out to uh, advertise and the justification for the ability to put the piece in there that uh, we can hire you as uh, as much as ten, step ten, depending on your experience.
And step ten is H one and twenty-nine, thirty-three an hour?
Correct.
Rebecca, you sent out some language on a spreadsheet. Is that consistent with that? I really don't understand those two documents, how they relate.
So they, well, the union contract is basically mirrors the personnel policy, which says that um, employees can be hired up to step C with approval of the commissioners. It doesn't really allow for placement beyond that, but I mean, that doesn't mean that, you know, you can't um, make that arrangement with the union.
So, does that have to happen? I mean, I understand the problem here and I, you know, we've got to solve the problem somehow. Uh, but is there a problem that needs to be solved first is my question? Do we, do, do we need to amend this or, or, or work with the union? Or, or can we just do this?
No, I think that you would, well, you have a contract with the union and this would be outside of that contract. So I think that you would want to um, uh, have a discussion with them at least and come to an agreement and develop a side letter, probably.
Well, even before we get there, though, I mean, first of all, we need to look at the numbers and this is a four-dollar increase over what we're presently offering. And I guess I'd like to know, uh, how does that, how does that compare to other local agencies? And Scott Kane, where did that individual go that got out of the academy that didn't take a job here? Where did they go?
I, I really don't know. Uh, we haven't had any contact really. We contacted him uh, to set up uh, an interview and he said that he had already taken another position. So I really don't know what it is. But locally, um, agencies are allowing them to go in even at a higher rate than this. Uh, I know one of the local agencies hired retirees from Bangor Police Department and they lateral in at where their salaries were. So, you know, we're going to be forced to doing something. Obviously, uh, we had four applications the last time. One of them took a job before we could. Two of them didn't. One of them, we're looking at, was a very young person, looking at starting them in the jail to give them a taste of what it is to work in law enforcement. Uh, and it also gives us the ability to see, uh, if this person is going to be somebody that can work into uh, the patrol side of law enforcement. So, you know, four applications, none of them uh, really panned out. And we have some of the patrolmen, a couple, at least two of the patrolmen working here, uh, have been contacted by people who are blue pins, academy graduates, that would consider coming to Hancock County. But because of the pay discrepancy, uh, said that their budgets and, and wouldn't allow them to do that.
Well, gentlemen, I, I don't know if you recall, but when we had the discussion here a few months ago with the city manager in Ellsworth, town manager in Bucksport or whatnot, the manager Mosia said that the county was already paying more than the city, the patrol services and whatnot. I would really like to see, I would like to see the numbers from the five basic, the larger departments in Hancock County, not only in their staffing pay, but what they allow for coming in and what their top pay is. And uh, I'd like to see that. I know when, the more you pay, the better chance you get. But are we really going to be the highest-paid department in, in the state, just so that we can attract statewide? And obviously, that answer is no. I mean, you can't justify that to your taxpayers, so.
Well, I, you know, in response to that, we're not going to be the highest in the state. And the money that's in the budget uh, will cover these lateral transfers. Um, you know, those were, these, these are contract dollars and cents that were negotiated and agreed to by the union. Uh, the, the patrol unit had a meeting and they supported this, because they are the people that are being forced to work extra shifts. They're the ones that are jeopardizing their time off, because we can't fill the shifts. And quite honestly, if we can't attract people to get here, we're going to have to look at what services here at the sheriff's office that we continue to offer or don't continue to offer. So, you know, it's a catch-22. If you look back at dispatch, when, when the salaries were raised, when they were. So, y- you know, it's a catch twenty two. If you look back at dispatch, when the, when the salaries were raised, when they were having a difficult time when the salaries were raised. They've been able to fill positions. So money may not be the only thing, but it certainly is a big disqualifier in, in people. Uh, looking at possible coming here and, uh, working on the law enforcement side.
So, so as I understand this problem, I, I just want to. Make sure our, my assumptions are correct. We're not talking about changing pay rates. We're talking about. Changing where somebody can come in. Into, into the sheriff's department. Is that correct? Like if you had it, uh, let's say hypothetically, you had, uh, a, a, a guy who's been working for. You know, Somerset County for, for ten years, you're, you're looking to bring him in. Closer to the, the position that he had as opposed to starting from ground zero. Is that a fair assumption?
That is.
Okay. So, so to me, that's a little different than, you know, adjusting pay scales. So. And, and to me, attracting experience is, is important, you know, it, it, it's sort of what. It keeps you from having a real young force or a real old force. Uh, so given that. I mean, do, do, does the union and our officers or, or deputies currently? I mean, d- does this make sense to them? To me it makes sense, but maybe I'm simplifying.
Well, you're not, you're not adjusting the pay scale for everybody. You're adjusting the pay scale for one, one individual and that individual is going to turn out to be several. If everybody qualifies for ten, you're basically going to increase. Starting wage for our department by four dollars. Is that, they don't stay there for ten years. They're going to get that. That incremental raise every two years. And instead of taking nineteen years or whatever to reach top pay, they're going to get there and not. And so you have, you have, uh. Scott Kane, give me a minute, will you please? So you, you, you do have. A rate increase, but it's not across the board. It's simply for certain offices. And quite honestly, I think the sheriff would, I would think he'd be concerned about the morale in the department. That guy's been there three years and they hire somebody brand new that's going to be making more than he is, but. That's an issue he'll have to address rather than us.
Well, to me, part of this is experience, you know. Take what I'm going to say with a grain of salt because I don't have the experience that you gentlemen do, but what, to me, you, you're high, you know. Hiring, uh, somebody. Who hasn't gone to the academy is very different than somebody from who has been to the academy, who's very different from. My example of a guy from Somerset County who's been a deputy for ten years. I thought that that's what this. Is trying to solve. Is that? Do I have that wrong?
No, Commissioner, let me address a couple of things. This is not saying that if, if we hire someone that has seven years of experience. That they're going to come in at ten on our scale. They would come in seven. This is higher than up to ten years of experience. Um. Which makes it a little more attractive. You, you increase the pool, um, that you'll be addressing to try to pick from. So if somebody has five years. Uh, experience, they, we wouldn't bump them up to ten. We'd ask to approve them at the five year step. Uh, which might, would make it more attractive to someone with five years' experience, you know, coming to work for us. And the other piece that I said earlier, the, the, uh, union group has met, uh, and they agreed. That, uh, they would support this. As I said, they, they're being, uh, forced to work shifts. When you're working a six and four days, if you have to work a couple of shifts over there, your, your, uh. Scheduled shifts from six days on, four days off to eight days on and two days off. So that, that isn't going to help retaining people that you have. So. Hopefully that clarifies. I'm not looking to, you know, everybody that I hire that comes in here is going to come in at the ten, ten year staff. No. But it increases the size of the pool of people who may consider to come here.
So Sheriff, explain. So step C, uh, what's? What number of years is that considered, uh, would, you know, in the, in the pay scale?
That's, that's the third step, Commissioner.
So it's third, uh, uh, three years of experience, right?
Correct. No, no.
No.
You, uh, John, you started one. At the end of the first year, you go to two. So at the end of the second year, you're at the third, you're a step C. So it takes two years to get to C because you enjoy C. Your full third year. And so it's a li- it's a little misleading when you say it's for years. It's really two. And I can tell you, gentlemen, not my words, if we approve this today and whatnot, it'd be just a matter of time for the union comes along and says, we wanted everybody else to catch up with this guy. That's going to be a bargaining.
Look, we, it looks like.
Four dollars now.
Yeah, I, 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 I see that, but I also see the problem. I, I see the problem that the. The sheriff's trying to solve here and I, I, I think it's a similar problem and probably every. Other department in the county and, and even other counties. So I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I would, you know, it almost sounds like we need. Uh. I don't know how we get something from you. This is new to me. I, how do, do we get something from the union that says we're okay with this or? Or, you know. Here's some other alternatives or, you know, and are other departments doing this? That, that's the other question. I, I just, you know. This is my fear of not doing something is that we get a very experienced. You know. Officer from another department, you know, who's looking to move departments and he has to start off at the very beginning. We're, we're never going to attract that, that person. And I guess the question is, do we need to attract them? And I, I think we do. Uh, is it, and the next question is, is how to get there?
Commissioner Clark, I got a message. Everybody has this problem. Everybody, all our enforcement agencies are having a problem attracting. You know, when, and when the sheriff says he's going to have to think about what services. Well, think about the private sector. Think about your job, Paul. I mean, there are, there are services, goods and services that. Are not going to get, get provided because they don't have staffing enough to provide those. I mean. Maybe the sheriff is going to have to sit down and do what everybody else is doing right now in the private sector with deciding. Given the staffing he's got, what level of service can he provide?
I think I just, I, I think I said that, that we're going to have to look at what we have. You know, we have town contracts out there that we have commitments with. You know, is that something I'm going to have to call them up and say, I'm sorry, I'm giving you your thirty day notice. We're not going to go. We're not going to take care of Tremont. We're not going to take care of Stonyton. We're not going to be able to take care of the airport. You know, what am I going to do? My, obviously law enforcement, uh, our primary function is to handle complaints with the citizens. To me, anything above and beyond that we're doing is. Is a luxury maybe, or maybe that's a bad way to put that. And what I mean is alluding to these contracts. Can do, if, if this is above and beyond what our real responsibility is. And I, I don't want to go to the, to the, uh, collectment of those communities and say, well, you know, I can't do this anymore. You know, and it, it's gotten worse as of yesterday because two more of, of our patrolmen, uh, currently at the academy. They started yesterday. So they're unavailable for, for another eighteen weeks. So when I'm now five people short.
Commissioner Clark, I got a question for you. So. You're concerned. I want to make sure I understand what we're really talking about doing because. If, um. If we, if he goes out to advertise and he gets a, uh, an applicant that only has seven years of experience. He's not going to go to the, the, the H one, correct? Is that, am I understanding that right, Bill?
Right. I'm just trying to see what step that would be. So he started a, so. One, two, three, four, five, six. He, you know, he'd be F. He'd be a couple of steps below. He'd, he'd still be twenty seven sixty four as opposed to twenty nine thirty three. It's a buck and a half less, but nevertheless substantially more than the twenty five thirty that, uh.
Well, so my only thing is the. I don't know if I quite get how the concern over the union coming back and wanting the. Wages to go up for the other officers because it's still. All based off of their years of service, right? Matching up with their years of service. So you can't have the guy that's five, seven years go to ten years because he hasn't been there ten years.
Right now though, it's, uh, right now it's, it's the years of service with this department. And you're going to have a, you're going to have a group of people now with years of service. I don't know what the criteria is with, with another department, like since he graduated from the academy or what that criteria is. But whatever it is, is going to be very attractive to the people. I mean, if we hired somebody. From another department, we hired a guy from Bangor, P G. He had three years up there and then I can see that the union coming back and say, well, I want, I want to give him credit on the wage scale for three years in Bengal. And so I just, you know, I think that's just a, an unintended consequence that we're going to have to probably face. And I don't blame the union. I mean, they, they represent the employees and get them all they can, but. Careful what you ask for.
I see what you, I see what, I understand better what you're saying, that you're worried that they're going to retroactively want to go. Oh yeah. Well, Bob came in last year as a four year, the four years of experience. Or five years of experience and now I want to make sure it matches up with. Our, our new higher lateral. Lateral pay. So I think I, I think I better understand where your concern comes from.
Uh huh. Yeah, that puts that in perspective. Uh.
I, I was wondering the same thing and I'm looking at the roster and I would have to lean on the sheriff and the chief deputy to. Take a look and see if that, that possibility exists where somebody came aboard. Is under that situation, maybe they had five years' experience. They hired a step C. That's all they've given. Uh, there may be a valid claim there. The other can of worms for me, which really, I mean, you have the same issue in the jail. So is, you know, in discussions, does that open up for the jail to take a look and be able to hire somebody? Generally, I don't know if Tim necessarily gets experienced people, but if he runs across that. Um, and then there's the fact, you know, you just Robert from Peter to pay Paul, you know, other agencies and, and taking people from there, but. I do agree that we need to think a little differently than what we've currently been doing. And so the question earlier about the union, yeah, so that's, that's as simple as if you can pop with some. Decision today, or even if you just want to ask the question, uh, we've got negotiations later. Uh, that's for me, to me, that's as simple as a side letter. That would indicate what the parameters are that are being allowed and both sides agree to this. And it's sort of an amendment to the current. Contract. And if it flows over into negotiate, into you, into the, sorry, into the jail. Corrections contract, then it would just, we would put that in the current contract.
I'll not suggest that, uh, that. That sideline would be negotiated and drawn up and brought back to us so that we can understand what we're going to be agreeing to. And, uh, that can be done and, and brought back to us within, within two weeks. And, uh.
Yeah, it, it sounds to me like we need. I, I fully understand the problem and I, 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 I also see some of the unintended consequences that could potentially happen. And, and so maybe Commissioner Clark's proposal is. How we solve both those things.
We're meeting, we're meeting today with, uh, with the county. And, uh, there's no reason we can't, uh, take a few minutes and, and perhaps iron out the. The basics of a, of a, uh, side letter for that and see exactly what, what the conditions are. And have that ready for us at the next meeting.
I, I don't think any of your concerns are not valid and we do have folks here that. Came here and did take a cut. And so Commissioner Clark is correct in that there are. A handful of staff that would be affected by this. They came here knowing that they did not get credit for their years of service. So that's not wrong. Um, and they are well aware of that. And, um. You know, so I'm not going to sit here and tell you that you would not hear that later on because that's, that's not true. So. But having said that, I mean, what we're up against, you saw recently a community not far from here that advertised with a twenty thousand dollar hiring incentive. So that's what the majority of communities are doing or offering substantial hiring bonuses that. We've just not gone there yet. We're trying to find something that makes us more attractive in the long term rather than just the short term. And that's where this proposal came from. Um, if I had a hiring pool, even if they were young officers to train and. And, uh, you know, to bring along like ma- many of us did here, then I would certainly do that. But I can tell you that since we've been shorthanded, I've been pounding the brush everywhere, looking for applicants and trying to develop those people. And currently they just do not exist.
If I could, just a couple of things to follow up with the chief deputy. One is, is we probably should have that list is to be aware of what liability maker. Number two is. You know, the, the sign on bonus or bonus, whatever you recruit, recruitment bonus, um, whatever that is, that might be an alternative consideration. Or some hybrid where you consider both.
Yeah. And you know, the other thing is this is not going to continue indefinitely. It's just how long it continues, uh, and. Are we setting ourselves up for when it does change? And maybe it doesn't matter because it's going to be so long before it changes. I don't know. But, uh. Yeah, that's something else to consider.
Well, I'll, I'll just throw another piece out there. Uh, we were, ran into a situation, I guess, I think it was a year ago, whatever it was, where the state police got back on their commitment here. In the county, which meant we had to look for more people and that our people had to take on a larger. Uh, load of the work here in, in the county. And if you just, have you seen the news lately that the same thing is now happening in Penobscot County? And I've said this for a long time and I'm still waiting for the phone call or the letter from the colonel saying that. I'm sorry, we're canceling the entire agreement and, um, that we are not going to, uh, offer any rural services. Now, I may be off base on that, but so far, uh, my crystal ball has been pretty accurate and I think. That the S P with all due respect to them, want to specialize in a lot of things and, uh, you know, I will thank them again for everything they did to us when we lost, uh. Deputy Gross. They, they were very helpful, uh, and, and helped making that service and memorial very, very respectful and very, very professional. And I tip my hat to them for that. But. What that does is if that happens, uh. We're going to be even a bigger situation where we would have to immediately start looking at. I can't do contracts because I don't have enough people. So, you know, I don't want to be, you, you know, the bearer of bad news. But when you look at the history of how these things have gone and as in Pat said, when you've got, uh. Twenty miles up the road, you've got an agency offering twenty thousand dollars right off the top. Um. That's hard to compete with.
What does the state police do?
I'm not touching that line, Commissioner. Uh, I'm not going there. They, they have a call sharing agreement with us and they did with many.
No, no, no. I, I don't mean that. I mean. I misspoke there. What is, is the state police lateral in people?
They, uh, you know, they've taken a tremendous amount of blue pins and blue pins are academy graduates. Um. From agencies like ourselves and, uh, you know, we lost a deputy of the state police several years ago. I know, uh. Across the street and I think probably all the agencies here in Hancock County, uh, at one point have lost. Uh, officers that have gone to the state police. So, you know, they're actively out recruiting people that are, um. Academy graduates. Yes, i- i- if you meet the criteria and go through the hiring process, they'll hire somebody, you know, that's. For lack of a better term, green person, just like Pat said. I, I wish we could hire all new people, just like the two that we just sent to the academy. That way we can train them the way we want them to train to fit into our picture. But that pool is, is not very deep. So, you know, they are actively recruiting. Uh, and they'll admit it, you know, I've had conversations with, uh, lieutenants and above the, and, and they point out, told me, yeah, we're out recruiting. Uh, even down to the road troops there, you know, I have several offices here, young offices. That scared me to death that, that, uh, they've looked and say, well, I, I want to move or I want to do this and would swap over to the state police. So. You know, it, it's, it's difficult. Everybody, everybody is scratching, imploring to get somebody. And if this piece helps us attract a larger pool to, uh. To hire people, uh, that would be, uh, that would be a plus for us.
Pat, so you're going to get a, uh, a list to Scott, right? That kind of gives us a, uh. A window on staffing and where, uh, where we might see an issue arise. Uh, if we were to make the change, correct?
If, if I'm looking real quickly through my list, it looks like about, it looks like five. I'd have to look at it. If I'm looking real quickly through my list, it looks like about, it looks like five. I'd have to look at it a little closer. It looks like five. And are you asking Commissioner where they, if if we had. Lateral them in when we hired them, where they would be today? Is that the information you're looking for, Commissioner?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wanting to know, yeah, like where, have us do a little bit of. Legwork to see if if things go south and we see a change uh. And we, it ends up coming into the union contract, what we might be looking at as a change if if that were to happen. To me right now, for the discussion. I'm probably a lot more interested in finding out. Uh, whether doing a signing bonus saves the county money in the long run because we're keeping wages. At bay and, you know, when you start raising the wages, it's not just. Obviously, the one year at the higher pay, it's gonna be the years of service that we're, everything keeps moving up. So. I'm kinda wondering whether.
Remember, John, though, that if you, let's say we offered a ten thousand dollar signing bonus.
Yeah.
That guy was a three, a three-year blue pin. What, no, you're gonna, you're gonna pay another twelve thousand on top of the ten to pay off his um. Academy trading. And the fewer the years, the more you're gonna pay. So, I mean, it isn't just the ten if you're talking about somebody. Less than five years out of the academy.
Gotcha.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see what McConney's response is to a side letter on this issue. We're gonna have him, you know, in in a couple hours here and uh. And I'd like to. I'd like to see if that gives us some insight on on whether or not we wanna approve the sheriff's request.
And if I could, Sheriff, Commissioner, so, yeah, that information that the the sheriff is just talking about, I think should be addressed to the side letter. Uh, just to cover, make it clear, what do we do about current? This is what we recognize. Um, you know, what's what's the, uh, what's the agreement as to how do we settle this out? You know, is there any, is there any retro consideration? I'm not suggesting that. Um, you know, there's simply just they they move and adjust their pay or do anything at all. And I think, I think based on. Uh, what he's telling us is what problem would have considered doing something. But that would be my suggestion.
Well, you know, this is basically going retroactive and then how far back do you go and. You know, all these things are, you know, mulling through my, I mean, I wanna solve the problem. It's just, I wanna, I. You know, or I see the problem and I just don't know how to solve it is more accurate. I.
Right. And I think I think the first step is the conversation. I I I don't think the problem is all that complicated and you choose to go this route, but. We definitely wanna cover up, cover up the reasons.
Yeah, and it'd be nice to know what other departments are, I mean, that we're certain, we can't be the first department to, you know. We know signing bonuses is one way to do it. What are others doing?
Okay, so can I, can I assume that after we have that uh, meeting with McConney today? I'll have direction on information that you'll be going forward or. If you're satisfied with what we discuss and come up to uh, come up for a solution, then then I'd get permission to do this. Is that safe in saying that? I have one of those two things.
Well, this this is gonna have to come back to us to take official action.
Right. Uh, yeah, I'm thinking that first meeting in February.
Well, I'm, okay, w- w- we're really dealing with two things here. One is to reauthorize advertising. Period. And the other one is, is, you know, this step thing. I think we could take action on the reauthor, you know, to authorize re-advertising. It's this, you know, the the second part of it that we don't know where to go because of all things.
But Paul, he wants to re-advertise at the higher price and right now, we haven't, we haven't given him the thumbs up on that.
Okay.
He doesn't, he doesn't need our permission to re-advertise. If he, if he doesn't get applicants in the first round, he just keeps seeking applicants. What he needs is to put this clause in that they'll pay up to ten years.
Correct.
Okay, I I misunderstood.
Really, there's only one issue, Paul. The issue is whether or not we're gonna let him advertise more than step C.
Okay, I I I wasn't aware of that. So it is one, one issue. Doesn't sound like we're prepared to make that decision today. And I I, you know, as much as I'd like to. Hint one way or the other, I don't think we can.
Well, I think the sheriff is gonna be with us during the McConney's. Meet with him and I think uh, by the time we get done talking to him. By general consensus, he's gonna, the sheriff is gonna have a pretty good idea on whether or not this is gonna fly. So. I think let's just get, uh, let's get to that meeting with McConney. Let's let's put it on the table and see where it goes.
Yep.
Sounds good.
With that.
All right, Pat, what you got for us here?
Can I, can I interrupt, Commissioner?
Yep.
Could could I ask to take C out of uh, out of order and I'll take care of that and the other two B and D uh, Chief King was gonna work on? Is that, is that okay? Or I can leave the last three, all three?
It's fine with, that's fine with me.
I, okay, she requests permission to purchase two in-house video cameras, totally ten thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Excuse me, from G one dash three zero one four, which has a current balance of eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents. These two will win the new cruisers if you have worked out the parking lot. By some miracle, uh, Cork Auto found two Tahoe's. We picked them up last Tuesday, dropped them off. Got them striped and they are sitting in the parking lot, waiting for us to get equipment. This equipment will win those two new cars so that everything in that cruiser from the road up will be new. The problem, uh, we're gonna have to replace some other cameras in the future. They're getting older and they're and the company that manufactures it doesn't support them. So this, uh, when this, when this is assigned to the two deputies. Uh, everything they have will be new in there.
And this is in the budget and this is nothing new.
This is in a reserve account that's dedicated for these types of things, Commissioner.
Oh, some move.
Second.
Any discussion? I just had a question, uh, Sheriff. So right now, are they um, are they all set up with our new uh, safety?
Uh, they will be, they will be. They'll have that additional light band. They'll have the, they'll have the uh, striping in the door panels and that. Just the outside with with our logo uh, is is put on at Karen's time.
Okay. All right, uh. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Chief King will take care of these other two.
Well, gentlemen, um, and to go back, just Commissioner Wabaker to. Uh, your question about the safety equipment, all of those vehicles have been updated uh, currently. So we're all, everything that was recommended has been done. Um, so we're in full compliance there.
Great.
Uh, so the discussion regarding a spillman administrator, I tried to explain it as best I could in the written documentation that I. Sent to you previously. This uh, has been a longtime need um, that we've. Search for answers for for years, uh, myself and working with Scott Atkins um, in the R I T and Chuck. Um, what brought this to the front? Um, most recently was the addition of Washington County and their desire to join us. Um, which brought some funding forward to help offset our costs locally to hopefully bring this project to uh. Finally together. Um, this is a need. I forwarded you um. Just some brief comments from two of the chiefs uh, that are involved with this locally. Um, I didn't seek one of the third ones for obvious reasons. I think he has a conflict there um, with a proposal. He certainly supports it, but um, I didn't wanna put him in that position. So. Um, obviously, we're looking to contract with the city of Ellsworth for services. Um, which, given everything that we have to consider, I think is the best option. Um, for us to move this project forward.
So th- this person would be um, w- w- would be a. An employee of the city of Ellsworth and we contract. So in that dollar amount is all, that that's an all-in cost, right? Because it's a contract?
That's correct.
Okay, so that includes benefits and everything else because uh, because it's a contract.
That's correct. One thing, Commissioner, that's not or will be spelled out in an agreement. Is there is a few dollars set aside there to pay for travel where we're talking about Washington County here. Um, there'll be some travel for that individual um, to do some onsite work there. So that is figured into that as well, but just for clarity.
Yeah.
That. Second, second page of your memo. First of all, paragraph, we're talking about eighty-twenty split of Jason's time. This would mean Hancock County be responsible for a hundred thousand? What's that mean?
So that's eighty percent of his salary and benefits.
Eight, a hundred thousand?
That's correct.
So, so the cost of Jason would be a hundred thousand to Hancock County?
That's correct. Uh, that would be our cost of the contract with Ellsworth. And we would bring a show revenue from Washington County to help offset that.
So our cost net of that revenue is fifty thousand?
That, that's correct. I think that's correct.
Okay, of the fifty thousand that Washington County is gonna pay us, are we uh, spending? Some of that fifty thousand for licenses or can it all go towards the cost of Jason?
I'm not sure what license is you're referencing, Commissioner, but that, everything will go towards the cost of this contract with Jason. There are no additional. Licensing costs. If you're referring, if you're referring to Washington's cost to license with Spillman, that's above and beyond this.
That's what I'm looking at. Somewhere in here, you talked about the cost of licensing for.
Correct.
So, so when we do the math, then Jason's gonna cost us a hundred, but we'll get fifty thousand of that from Washington County. And that whole fifty can go towards Jason, the cost of Jason's. Pay and benefits?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, i- i- it's, I don't mean to interrupt you, Commissioner Clark, but I, we're not paying. Jason, or I'm sorry, that was the last name here, but uh.
Ingles.
We're, we're not paying him. We're, we're, we're paying the city of Ellsworth under contract.
Well, I guess, yeah, it's it's the same thing. I'm I'm sorry. That's what I really mean. How much have, were we paying the city and or Jason prior to, how much are we paying them now prior to this agreement, anything?
Uh, so we cover the cost of their spillman licensing. Uh, we do pay that.
Do we still, will will we still under this agreement?
No, we will not pay that any longer. Um, after, that's been covered for twenty-two already, but that will not. Twenty-three going forward.
So how much is that, you know?
Yeah, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars. It's pretty, it's pretty miniscule, honestly. And we've also leased. Um, services for storage space from the city of Ellsworth, which will also be coming to a conclude uh, conclusion. Um, after twenty-one, actually. So that's about ten thousand dollars a year.
Ten thousand we're not gonna have to spend because of this new arrangement?
That's correct. And and also because of your um, the investment in the infrastructure that you've already made locally here.
So the, the net, the net increase in in the cost of this arrangement for the county is gonna be forty thousand?
Give or take a few dollars, yes. That's correct.
Yeah, so everybody's gonna be taking care of their own licensing from this this day forward. We'll have, we'll be contracting with the city of Ellsworth for. For this administrator. This seems to be a much more straightforward proposal to me.
It was as straightforward as I could make it, Commissioner, and and you're right. And, you know, we've been living on borrowed time. And uh, it's uncomfortable to say the least. And I think Monday was a prime example of that when we had a failure. Uh, when Spillman was down across the county, uh, which meant all communities, uh, all. Emergency services were down and Jason was within a half an hour headed up and running again and. And everybody was back in business. So um, he's just a vital piece to keeping this going.
So Pat, the um, the savings that we were talking about of around ten thousand dollars, is that? Is that all, where's it budgeted at currently? Is it all under the sheriff's department or is it under R C C? Where where's it at?
It's in our budget, Commissioner.
Okay.
In that, in our computer line.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna move towards the concept of sharing a spillman administrator and continuing negotiations with the city of Ellsworth and Washington County. On this possible sharing arrangement. I think that's what you're looking for is, is support from us.
It is. I'm sorry, but I can't second that because the other part of this is how are we going to pay for this? Because they don't have the forty thousand in their budget. To to pay the difference in twenty-two. So the other half of how we're going to pay for this needs to, needs to be understood before we can approve this package. So.
Well, a- a- again, my motion is just, just to support the concept of the, to, to uh, you know, develop. You know, an agreement and and, you know, in doing that, we, you're right, we have to figure out how to pay for it. Uh, I don't think we can do that before we have an agreement, uh, you know, another chicken and egg thing.
Well, that agreement is gonna be between the sheriff's department and and Jason, it's not between us. No, I mean, if if we, if we take action today, we can authorize the sheriff to contract with. City of Ellsworth for spillman services.
Uh, that's not what this motion says.
But but I think you do have to, I think if you have concerns about funding, you should probably discuss that now so that you have some sort of.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. We should.
So.
I think the action we can take today that that Scott, Pat is hoping for is A, to approve the sheriff to sign a contract with the city. And B, we're gonna pay for it this way. That's what, Pat, that's what you need today.
Yes, I mean, that's ideal. Uh, we can put this to bed and I can bring the contracts back for uh, for your signature. Obviously, they're financial, so they. Require your approval, but honestly, I was more uncomfortable with moving this. I mean, there's more than one municipality of all two counties. Personnel, I was uncomfortable moving this any further without, at least in concept. That you, your gentleman agreed that this is a proper step in the right direction before you went any further. But. If you're willing to discuss the financing and put this to bed finally, then that's ideal, yes.
Well, I'm not ready for that. I'm, I I'm ready to support it i- i- in concept. And then, and then when all, you know, you have all that information, because I honestly don't think you have all that information yet, do you?
Not in finality. I think the framework that I gave you is kind of worst-case scenario and whether it worked within that is my intent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I think commissioners, I think you deal with roughly fifty grand. It may not be that much, but give or take, I mean, you always wanna keep a little buffer. So you can take the choice of trying to specifically identify, you can identify options, you know, how well I'm at that. Uh, all the other one is, is look, we'll find it somewhere because you know there are options. Could be art money, could be maybe benefits, could be undesigned fund balance.
Yeah, so that's why I'm looking to support the concept is no more than that at this point. And I don't, and I really don't think the chief deputy was asking any more than that.
No, I don't think he is, but I think the commission needs to be comfortable with.
Yeah, oh, I I think we, I think we have a pretty good idea of where we're, where for this. Year, we can get the funds, whether it's exactly what Scott said, whether it's community benefits or art. Obviously, beyond this year, it's gotta get into the budget. But uh, I don't have any problem in supporting. We, we can have a discussion over which one of those areas we wanna have, have it come out of eventually. But it sounds like Paul doesn't wanna really have that discussion at this point.
No, I, 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 I think it's a little premature, you know, but um, but my motion is. I don't know if anybody, if you want me to re- read it or if it just dies. Uh, but, you know, it. I'm looking to support the concept just to give the chief deputy. The the comfort that we support the concept. We have not gone beyond. Where to fund it or, you you know, and and I'm not sure he's done that research yet, you know. Uh, or I shouldn't say that. I'm not sure he's comfortable with. You know, the rest of it yet.
You know, I don't wanna continue to be the proverbial doom here today with all the sheriff's requests. But I gotta tell you that uh, and I've had this conversation with Pat. I'm very concerned that we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars contract with an employee from the city of Ellsworth. With the understanding that we're going to get four full days of his his time while he is still doing work, I T work for the city. And I gotta tell you, if. And I got to tell you, if, if Jason Ingles needs, if we need him for something, at the same time Glenn Mosia comes in and says, I want you doing this now. Guess where he's going to go? And so this, this really isn't, this is not an ideal situation for us. And as Pat said when we discussed this, it's the only one that, that we have available to us at this time. Because it's a contract, we can, we can dissolve it anytime we want, but. I think what we're really doing, gentlemen, is this is an interim step and we really need to think about giving. Chuck, another IT person who is qualified to do someday to do Spillman. So that we have Spillman service done in-house by our people.
Well, here's, here's why I support it. I support it because. I don't think that this is a full-time county position. I think this is a shared, this is a perfect example of a shared position between two counties with similar problems. And a, and the city of Ellsworth. Uh, so I, I beg to differ that we're contracting with a specific individual. We are not contracting with a specific individual. We're con, my vision is that we are contracting with the city of Ellsworth for these services. If they're not providing these services, then we should get out of the contract. I, 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 I like this, uh, you know, a contract like this as opposed to adding an employee. It gives us more flexibility. We don't have a lot of the, you know, exposure to, you know, everything that comes with another. Uh, employee. Uh, I like this arrangement. It may not work, you know, that is a very real possibility that it may not work, but we don't have a lot of risk here. Uh, the, and if it does work, I think we're saving the county money.
Oh, contrary, contrary to what you said, we are contracting with an individual. The contract may say the city of Ellsworth, there's only one person in the city of Ellsworth. Who is capable of providing Spillman maintenance and that's Jason Ingles. And so it's not like the whole IT department is available to us for, under this contract. There's only one person and that's Jason. If he's not available, we don't have Spillman maintenance at our disposal when he's occupied doing something else.
Pat, what's the, uh, what's the, your vision of the contract? What, uh? What's the term of the contract you're, you're thinking? Is it one year? Is it longer? What's the story?
So it'd be a yearly contract. Um, there'll be a. With initial discussions, of course, there's always cost escalators. I mean, you're always. You're going to have coalers and everything else configured, so I, I suspect this will be an annual review. Um, and, and approval. So we are a year at a time. You know, would my preference to be to have Jason Ingles as a staff member? Absolutely. Um, that's just not possible right now. That's not his. Desire, um, to work here. He likes where he works. He wants to continue some of the projects that he's doing, and I respect that. Having said that, Commissioner Clark is exactly right. There is one person that has the ability to provide these services and that is Jason Ingles. Um, this is a very special, very special product and I suspect that. Uh, Commissioner Parity and Commissioner Wabaki, you probably experienced something similar in your professional world. Where you have very specific people that can provide a service to you and this, this is the situation we're in. Uh, we've had discussions over the years with outside providers. Um, you know, Chuck has done. I, I can't give that guy enough credit for what he's done. Um, but it's a heavy lift and he just. It's kind of like asking me to come up and install something, you know, a heat system in your house. That's just, that's just not me, you know? I don't think you'd be very, very happy with the end, end product there. I think this is the best solution. For the problem that we have to make this situation better.
So, oh, we have to comment too that this isn't a full-time position, you're right. But for a hundred and plu- hundred plus dollar, hundred thousand plus dollars. That can be a full-time position with Chuck and we could do, be doing other things like cybersecurity and other things that Chuck needs help with, so. It, it's, it's not, it's not a hundred percent of Jason's time. But for the money we're going to pay the city of Ellsworth, we could have a full-time person here. If we could get them trained in Spillman and have him left over doing other jobs.
Wow, that goes into the ifs and buts and candy and nuts though, so. We don't have, we don't have another person. We don't have the time to necessarily train anybody right now to do it, so that's, I get what you're saying, but. Doesn't sound like there's anybody to, to do that and. We're not, how are we going to train somebody up to do that?
So for me, this is the exact scenario that Bar Harbor faced when I was on the council and we're talking about a, a chief sharing agreement. Uh, you, you know, if, yes, there was a specific person, this person, but, you know. Over time, they tried to migrate it to, to not be a specific person, but a position that we were contracting for. So when I say not an individual, that's what I mean. Now. I, is this the answer? I, I don't know that. Is this a good way to start off? Yeah, it's a fif- it's a fifty thousand dollar experiment. It's not a hundred, it's fifty. Uh, i- it's actually forty, you know, because of some of the numbers that we've been discussing. But let's call it fifty just for random numbers. So to me, that is, y- y- you know, this may not work. We may decide, hey, this is a full-time position and Commissioner Clark's comments are spot on, you know? But we don't know that right now. And to me, the chief deputy's been working on this. He's solved the, you know, this is a stab at solving the problem. None of us are sure i- it's going to succeed, but I'm not seeing anything better on the table. Uh, and, y- you know, I, I, I don't know, this makes sense to me. And, and, and it makes sense to me just from my experience in Bar Harbor. I, i- it, it's the same quandary we were in, you know, however many years ago, seven, eight years ago.
I want to make sure when it gets time to the budget time, that we see the computer line. Uh, go down by the ten thousand dollars and it isn't just, oh, you know what, we need to. Get new computers, whatever it is, like, I want to see that number go down by ten thousand dollars if we do this. You know what I mean? I don't want it to be forgotten. Oh, yeah, well, now, you know, John, we need those new. I mean, we haven't even gotten to what the next topic is on the conversation, so, you know what I'm saying?
No, I, I, you know, but it is real, i- if, you know, like. Yeah, because it does get buried in a, in a, in a bigger account, but, you know, from what the chief deputy is, is. Outlined, we're saving ten thousand dollars in licensing or written, or in random numbers. We are getting fifty thousand from, from. You know, uh, Washington County, so, I don't know.
Real quick, as they say, you know, this is not the, the most perfect solution, but it's the best damn solution we have in front of us. I, I, I will back that up, uh, very confidently. Uh, Commissioner Clark is exactly right. We need to address this in-house in the future, quite simply because. As you were talking about, you know, whether you're contracting with one person or not, um, you are currently. Um, kind of stuck with that one, that one option, not that one person, because fortunately that person is very good at what he does. But right now, and for several years, as Pat pointed out, we've been kind of skating on thin ice because the entire county. As this project has grown leaps and bounds just since I've been here. Um, you've been relying on one person with all the technology, so we need a backup plan. And, and I think if just, like, if you can support this knowing, you got to come up with fifty thousand. Now, if he comes back and, you know, Pat, if you come back with a hundred thousand, it might be a different discussion. But I think fairly today, if you can agree that you, you know, you got to fund fifty thousand, forty thousand, whatever it is. Um, give him the blessing, move it forward and let's get this thing done. That would be my recommendation.
Pat, I got a, I got a question, Pat. If Washington County hadn't. Come on board, would we have done anything?
We've been trying to, would we this year? Probably not, only because I'm respectful of the budget and I know what's in it. And I know the leaps and bounds that we've taken in the last few years because of your commitment, commitment from you, you folks. Having said that, this has been a very real need. We have projects that have been sitting on the shelf. For three and four years that we just have not been able to accomplish. Just because we don't have somebody to drive the bus and that affects every public safety agency in the county. Um, you know, this isn't just the sheriff's reporting system anymore. Uh, this is grown tremendously. Um, and I, I can't think of anybody involved in public safety in this county that would not support this endeavor.
Now, what happened over to city of Ellsworth that gave Jason the ability to devote. Four out of five days of his work week to Spillman?
Nothing has happened yet. Um, Jason has a desire to dedicate to this project. Uh, to Spillman and to move it forward. Having said that, he also has a commitment to the city of Ellsworth on a handful of projects that I dare to him that he wants to see continue. Um, therein lies the reason why he was not necessarily willing to take an employment position with the county. Um, and so. What the city of Ellsworth is going to do to make up that difference and loss of time, I, I'm not going to speak for them or out of school, but. They will have to do something to address that on their side and they're aware, they're well aware of that. So in other words, his time to the city of Ellsworth is going to be reduced.
So I, I think it's time to either move on or, or let this motion.
Why don't you repeat your motion again?
Move to support the concept of sharing a Spillman administrator and continue negotiations with the city of Ellsworth, Washington County. On this possible sharing arrangement.
Seconded.
Purposely vague, but lends some, lends some support.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to cautiously say aye.
All right, next up?
Well, the next item on the agenda wasn't worded exactly as I had anticipated it would be. Uh, we had come to you previously and asked to go out to RFP. Um, for our radio system, which was approved and was in fact put out with a local vendor. Um, so I guess, um, you should have the response to that RFP. I believe you received it yesterday. So. Having said that, I guess I'm looking for a little guidance on. Moving forward with that, considering the wording and what you folks have in front of you.
Well, let's, let's cut right to the chase here. The total project is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, correct?
That's correct.
And that's going to replace all the mobiles, all the portables? Two of the repeaters, Will Hill and Waldo?
It's going to upgrade those two repeaters, so all three repeaters as they've been built out. Um, have been built out with this project in mind, so they just need a software upgrade. Um, which is inclu- included with this proposal.
And what's this consulate? What's that? This twelve thousand dollar item?
So that is actually, um, has to do with, um, the dispatch center and the RCC and upgrading. Um, their system and their abilities to be, uh, P twenty-five compliant.
And Scott Atkins, would a hundred percent of this be, uh, would qualify for APF funds?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it would. Um, just in, in, uh, just something that came to my mind. Uh, with the new rules, which we'll, we'll talk about later, but anything under a million. Um, in this type of spending, it technically doesn't require, uh, written authorization or justification for it. But I think if I could just ask Pat or, or with Connor or whatnot, just. But I, my concern is not going out to RFP, so if we could have maybe a document that you could draft up that simply says some reasons as to why this is sole source. But other than that, this falls under that communication. I think Kitty is still listening and she wants to weigh in. She hasn't seen all of this material being on vacation, but I'm going to follow up with what we talked about prior. With, uh, other county presentations, that this, this all falls under the, the communications and as they say, no better way to spend our money.
Well, Ted, with regards to sole source, uh, we only have one radio repair shop in Hancock County. That company has done all our work now for the last twenty-five years, Pat?
At least.
Anyways, twenty-five or thirty years and whatnot. Whenever we do something like this, we have to be sure that the company providing these, this equipment. Is capable of interfacing that with the equipment that that company already has in place with the consoles and whatnot, and that's what makes. That's what makes Brown a, a true example of sole source is that. They are the RCC maintenance coordinator. And for them to spec out equipment, we know that it's compatible with whatever equipment we have in place. And it's not going to lead us into having to replace tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars more equipment to make it compatible, so.
Right.
I, I would, first of all. I can't believe I'm, I'm jumping to approving a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar purchase, but knowing that it's APF funds. Knowing that we have adequate funds that we haven't earmarked for anything else. Realizing that this could put the SO into a situation where they wouldn't have to replace this equipment for another ten, fifteen years. And being very comfortable with Brown's communications being the sole source company. I'm ready to go ahead and approve today the purchase of this equipment and, uh, paying for it out of APF funds.
Well, totally agree, but I think that, I think that we do need to develop an RFP and, and I think that's what, what. Our administrator is hinting at. Is that correct?
No, I think, uh, but kind of in summary, what Commissioner Clark could explain, I think we should have something formal and whether. It could be two documents, but at the very least, one signed by the sheriff, um, and, and maybe the RCC director, I don't know. Um, just indicating some reasons why this, this is sole source. Why we wouldn't go out to RFP process, or we can, you can provide the verbiage we can work on together, put it on a commissioner letterhead, have the commissioners and the sheriff sign it.
Well, here's, here's what I had. Sort of devised as a motion and, and, and then maybe Commissioner Clark can, can suggest some. Amendments, but, uh, so I was going to move to approve developing an RFP for the sheriff's office radio upgrade. Previously discussed, because we had previously discussed this, with the understanding that this project will be funded with APF funds. And may be a sole source project due to current equipment, uh, due to current equipment as recommended. So.
So Paul, I'm not going to second that because there is no need for an RFP. If we make, if we make a conscious decision that Brown's communication is sole source, then eliminates the RFP process.
Okay.
Now, if, if we want to direct the sheriff to go back and tell. Brown's communications to sharpen your pencil, that's between he and the sheriff, I guess, but, uh. Um, I'm as comfortable, and I'm, I'm usually the one that's bringing up sole source when we, when we talk about these issues. I'm, I'm more comfortable with Brown's being deplated sole source than probably any other service provider that the county deals with because of the. Uh, for the reasons I stated previously. And so I would like to see that. We follow the administrator's recommendation that, that between the administrator and the sheriff, they draw up. A written document explaining why Brown's is the sole source and that we. Uh, do we, do we want to take some? I don't know, do we want to take some time and reexamine the equipment? Because I've looked this over several times and whatnot, and I, I can agree that this is the equipment that we need and. So basically, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have the document drawn up. That explains why Brown's is sole source and a motion today to approve the sheriff purchasing three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of equipment from Brown's. And upgrading his radio system.
I'll second that. Was that a motion?
Uh, well, uh, okay, Rebecca, you, you, do you have my comments in motion form? You do, okay. So, John, just so you understand then, we're going to get the document back to us at some point, explaining why Brown's is sole source on this project. And that today we're going to take action, approve from APF funds, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. To upgrade the sheriff's radio equipment. Would you say, Scott?
I said, I was trying to say that the document is simply backup or justification for any audit from the feds on the art lines or anything like that. So that we don't have to go back and recreate it from this meeting. We'll have it all set up and we'll be, we should be good.
But, okay.
Any other discussion? So just as a general question on it is, so I know, um, Commissioner Clark gave us an idea of how long he thinks the radios and everything will hold up, but Pat, what's your thought process on? What this is doing for the future?
Uh, this is a tremendous step forward. So I, I think Commissioner Clark's being conservative on his estimate of time on the lasting of these radio systems. Uh, I know the ones that we currently have are over twenty years old. And they're to the point where they're no longer being supported by Motorola. Um, in other words, they're cannibalizing existing equipment to keep us going, making those repairs because they can't get parts from Motorola. So so changing to the P twenty-five system, we've already been testing it, um, off a Cadillac Mountain, which is not our best tower anymore. And all I can say is the results so far are amazing. Um, I can actually hear from bad spots in casting in Deer Isle, in Stonington, not only on our mobile units, but on our portable units, which when the officers are out, um, is a tremendous benefit. But probably the biggest piece that I appreciate of this system the most. Other than being able to hear everybody is these, these radios also have a built-in GPS unit. Ultimately, the goal will be, we'll be able to tie that into our spillman software because they're owned by Motorola now. And dispatch center will not only be able to see where the cruiser is, but where the portable radio is. So when the officer separated from his vehicle. We'll actually be able to see them live. So this is really a step in, uh, safety of the deputies and the officers and, and, uh, you know, I, I, this is probably the best step that we've made safety wise since I've worked here and, uh, much appreciated.
Well, and we know, we know this is something has to be done. We know this is something that we, we currently don't have the budget to do. I mean, the stars are aligned. This, this is a, this is something in my opinion, we have to do.
Had there been, um, any money already set aside for this? For, yeah.
So I've been, as you're well aware, I've been trying to budget for this, you know, the capital improvement project for years. We haven't, uh, scratched the surface on that. I guess that's the commission position on that. I hope you're not suggesting you take those reserves to put toward this project for the very reason of the two cameras that you just, just approved to buy. Um, I can tell you I have six more coming down the road that are going to need replacement. So, um, I
I just wanted to know where, where we were at with it.
Well, and, and you know, I think what that does is stretch these reserves by taking up this all our APF funds.
Did your resets, because now what you can do is if you want to take a fifteen, twenty-year plan and you want to add a little growth factor to, let's say, you know, twenty-ish now, it's going to cost four hundred thousand dollars to replace it. Um, you know, then you just, you take the beginning balance and subtract, uh, subtract it out, divide by the number of years and now you get your new annual, uh, investment through the seventy series accounts, which, uh, should reduce the budget really. So
This gives us a chance to hit, exactly right, hit the reset button and have a proper capital improvement program for this. So that we're not faced or aware, but future commissioners not faced with this decision with no APF funds.
Uh, what do you have to say?
Uh, good morning. I just wanted to add, uh, our, all of our RCC upgrades, radio upgrades were in preparation for this, uh, to support this as well. But on the other side of that, uh, the P twenty-five world is, uh, is federal grant. It's, that's, there's federal grant money out there in the future, uh, for P twenty-five standard equipment. Uh, where some of the other stuff like Ellsworth system was not. Uh, and that's why we were successful with, uh, EMA getting, uh, FEMA and MIMAR grant funding uh, for our radio upgrades, uh, which does support, uh, the sheriff's department's, uh, future equipment. Just want to throw that out there that, that, that's why we, in, in, as far as the sole source goes. The other side of that is we have service contracts with Browns for the equipment that we currently have. That could potentially cause conflict with another vendor out there, uh, for radio support. Uh, it, it, you, you kind of, you kind of get rid of the, it's their, you know, it's their equipment. Uh, when it's all one vendor and, and they understand the entire process, the entire suite.
That's a good point, Bob. If we could get that into this document, document app that, uh, you're going to create, it's all good justification for sole source.
I'll work with that on that.
Andrew?
Good morning, everyone. Um, Bob is correct. Um, EMA has been bound to the P twenty-five standard. Through homeland security expenditures, um, since twenty thirteen. So all of our investments have had to follow that guideline, guidance and, and compatibility. And, uh, I'd ask the chief deputy Patrick, I'm sure you're aware that, uh, even though the data, some of those radios is quite aged, uh, there's still value in those to us for other missions. So I'd ask that you please retain those and get those back to us. And those components were impossible. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if there's nothing else, Pat from the sheriff's office, uh, John, I'd like to know if we could have a ten minute recess.
All right, we'll go into a recess. Ten minutes back to five to eleven.
There we go, Chair.
All right, we're back in session and we're, uh, item six, maintenance. Dennis?
Good morning, commissioners. How you doing?
Great.
Uh, you'll see, uh, uh, under maintenance, A, request approval of duct cleaning RFP. This is something that is, has long been on our long range plans and has been done before in the jail. Uh, but is now uh, something that is, uh, has come to the forefront given, uh, recent uh, pandemic health concerns, et cetera. And, uh, I guess there's some monies available to, to do this work. And, uh, so we put this project together. I use my typical, uh, RFP template. And Scott has taken the document, really streamlined it, uh, to include virtually everything we need to cover with this. There are certain components of the system which are not included, mainly the coils in this. And I've done an inspection of the coils, the ones that we can get in and see seem to be in great shape anyway. So that's an item that we can table and deal just with the bran, uh, branch and trunk line ductwork, which are in need of scrubbing and cleaning.
So I'm going to move to approve and publish a duct cleaning RFP as presented and requested.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm going to move to approve administrator administratively removing Darren Nato from the employee payroll.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next up is number four, probate.
Uh, this is, uh, not a new position. This is, uh, is that correct?
That is correct. It's an existing position that has been unfilled since the employee left at the beginning of COVID.
Perfect. Move to approve advertising for a part-time probate clerk is requested.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, uh, now we're at number eight, EMA. Andrew?
I don't know if Mr. Sankey, you wanted to say something or?
Andrew Bailey's on the phone. He's on the call too.
Well, I'm going to move to accept the resignation of Deputy EMA Director Andrew Brayley effective February eleventh. Wish him well and thank him for his exemplary service to Hancock County. And, uh, I don't know you very well, Andrew. I've heard a lot about you and I'm sorry that you're leaving.
It's with a certain amount of regret that I've seconded the motion, Andrew. I'm really sorry. I hope things work out for you. And I hope, Andy, that we can find somebody that can equally replace him. I second the motion.
Well, thank you for your kind words, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up.
I'm going to move to prove advertising for Deputy EMA Director as requested and, um, I, I just, I should have said, said this prior. Um, you, you know, in instances like this, it's sometimes the best time to examine whether the structure is correct. But I'm so new that I don't, you know, whether, don't know whether that, that comment holds any water.
I second the motion to advertise.
Question. So Andrew, how do you expect, uh, can you tell us a little bit about what's going to happen with, uh, the advertising? What your approach is going to be?
Uh, I think we're going to follow past practices. And, uh, Commissioner, if there are any questions that I might answer for you. Um, with respect to structure and any concerns or suggestions you might have. I'm, I'm certainly amenable to, to speaking to any of those things, uh, either now or, or at some other time. We identified, uh, several times over the years, my tenure, tenure now. Um, I went, at one time I went as long as eighteen months without having a deputy. And, uh, due to financial and administrative, uh, circumstances and so on, it was just required of us at that time. And, uh, it proved to be unworkable and, and we determined at that time that having a full-time exempt, uh, deputy was, was the right way to go. And that follows the model of, of the other fifteen counties. And, and established practices really nationwide, um, for the respect of our work and our missions and, and you know, we, we, even though we don't advertise it, we don't speak to it, uh, often. Uh, we try to keep a low pri- profile on purpose. Uh, we are a twenty-four seven, three sixty-five agency. Um, with a lot of responsibilities, not just here in Hancock County, but regionally, if not statewide. And, uh, I, I have confidence that with the right person, we'll be able to fulfill all of our mission sets, uh, to the caliber, which I think everyone's been accustomed.
And, and, uh, I have no concerns at all in the matter. I don't question it at all. It's just, I just made that comment in case you had you know, envisioned something differently. So don't read anything into my comment because it's, it's a, it comes from a very uneducated viewpoint on the subject.
I, I understand. I, I think it'd be helpful if I shared with you, uh, the existing job description, which, uh, was approved by, uh, the previous commission. And, uh, I think you see it, it's very comprehensive and very thorough. And I, of course, has always been relying, working with both Rebecca from an HR perspective and with Scott from the administrator perspective to, uh, see us bring in the right people at the rate, at the right pay grade to get the work done. So thank you.
Thanks.
I'll call the, uh, vote.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Obviously, uh, Andrew Brayley, I appreciate all you did to, and are still doing for us right now. And obviously, uh, everything that's happened for the last two years, you know, we know that you, your, your amount of commitment is huge. Uh, it never went unnoticed.
And we are appreciative.
Thank you all. And I'd just like to, to say I'm grateful for the opportunities that the, the county and the commission have, have granted me uh, in both personal and professional development. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I, if you don't mind, I'd also like to thank Andrew formally, uh, for his contributions over his almost three-year tenure. And, uh, you know, he's not dying. He's still going to remain a resource to us and he, uh, is really pursuing his, his dream job in his, in his dream profession, which he excels at. And, uh, you'll continue to be a resource, but not just Hancock County, but regionally, all of Eastern Maine. Through his work in paramedicine and his, uh, directorship of the Southwest, Southwest Harbor Tremont Ambulance Service. Um, so he's, he's going to continue to, uh, serve us all in that capacity and grateful for that also. Thank you.
All right, Scott, you're next up.
Yep, uh, the chair and commissioners, if I could ask for some consideration to go, um, go right to the old jail discussion. We have the union, um, here presently, that's jail laptop, that's Joe Patoni behind that mask. And so maybe we could, if we, if the, if the old jail, we could complete that. And then jump to negotiations. Joe has to leave by two. I'm hoping it certainly doesn't take that long, but.
All right, who's going to, are you leading the discussion on the old jail?
Uh, I think that may be, well, as far, so as far as the safety issue, the Commissioner Clark started to allude to that earlier. Um, and I, I know Terry's aware because she's, I think she said maybe the original pictures. Um, but there is some, some damage on the upper um, street side where just where the pole, the last pole for the netting is at the very top, some two by sixes, I think they are. And plastic laths is starting to pull away. I know Commissioner Clark, he can expand upon that. When I, I believe yesterday it looked and there's actually some, uh, construction material that appears to have fallen. I mean, no surprise, that's why we put the, the netting up there. But again, we see some continued deterioration of, of the conditions over there. And I, my point with, with this, uh, item today was to discuss or just bring that to your attention. And if there was an opportunity to discuss or any, I spent, I mentioned it to Dennis and Dennis's recommendation is really, um, not sure I, I touch on this, I didn't plan to fix it. So we'll keep an eye on it.
I, I, I read, uh, Commissioner Clark's notes. Um, and you, you know, I, I, I don't know if Commissioner Clark wants to sort of speak to that first, or if you want to hear my comments now. I'll leave that Commissioner Clark.
Well, for Terry's purpose, Terry coming to here with us, whatnot. Terry, I applaud the other commissioners and whatnot to make a decision on this new committee, this new refurbished committee that you have on, on studying the jails problem. On the issue of repurposing and allowing use, uh, uh, an alternate use of the interior of the building. Uh, and whatnot. And in doing that, I went back through and cleared back to when the jail stopped operating back in nineteen seventy-nine and went through and did some research on the history. And I found that in nineteen seventy-nine, when the group came to the commissioners wanting to have the building preserved, the commissioners recognized the historical significance. But, uh, they were very hesitant. And it took, they took steps to be sure that, uh, the building would first of all be used as historical exhibit and museum. One of them said the commissioners opposed another group taking over the building as they feel it should stay with the county. And so I, I think even back in nineteen seventy-nine, the commissioners were concerned that if the historical society didn't continue with the building, then it would go somewhere else to somebody else would have it beside the historical society and they opposed that. Now, in nineteen ninety-eight, when the historical society found that it would benefit them with grant funds and it felt better about putting a lot of money into the building if they owned it. Uh, the county ultimately deliberated on whether or not to give them a deed to the building. And one of the comments made by a different board in nineteen ninety-eight was there is a possibility that a business could buy that property and that would be unacceptable to the county. And that was comments that were generally, uh, from the board in ninety-eight, a completely different board. And here we are today and there is, there was been some indication that historical society would be coming back to the county, asking them to change or to remove from the deed, the provision that requires historical society to run that, this historical exhibit and museum. And quite honestly, Terry, I've come to the realization that that the commissioners in seventy-nine didn't want that to happen. The commissioners in ninety-eight didn't want that to happen. And quite honestly, we, the commissioners today, and I can tell you just from the discussions we've had over the past few years, wanna continue to see an effort made to restore the building. We want that to, to continue to run as a historical museum. And we don't want to see that repurposed and allow that building to be occupied, managed and run by an outside entity outside of the county government or Historical Society. It further bothers me that at one point, your President Bill Vogel made a statement that if they did repurpose that, it did become occupied and somebody managed that, that building, Historical Society would basically allow them full control of the building. And if they wouldn't, I can't remember how they put it, but basically they wouldn't be involved in the management of that building. And I've gotta tell you, Terry, that is completely unacceptable to the board in seventy-nine. It's unacceptable to the board in ninety-eight. And that's unacceptable to me personally today. And so I think it's only, it's only fair to Historical Society, this group that's now meeting to try to find a way to restore that building, that you're not misled to the point of that there could be some chance of getting an amended deed to the building. Because quite honestly, Terry, the past boards, commissions didn't want that. And I got a feeling that, or at least I personally can't agree to that today. So having said that, Paul, John, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, I think it's, you posed a good question, I thought, in, in what you wrote up on it about if it had never been deeded originally, would we be okay with the idea of a public or private entity taking over the building? I don't know if I have an easy answer on it. I mean, I understand the precedent that you're saying, that the passports have said on it. I guess I understand the issues. If, you know, there's no parking. It would just be made worse if it gets taken over and some kind of business goes in. Where's the parking gonna be? The museum would be gone and we would assume in that case. And any ability for the county to use the land for another purpose would be lost, of course. Then on the positive sides, I guess, would just be that you would have a building that would end up getting preserved because somebody would have to go into it, obviously, a lot of money. And it would be some economic development to the area if a business went into it. And to a certain degree, the county would be getting rid of something that could be a liability that if we take the deed back, let's face it, the odds are the county would, in the end, take it down. And we'd have those costs to incur. Of course, we'd have the land that we can use for something. But, so I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's kind of a complicated problem. There's no great answer to it. But in general, I do agree with you that the intent of deeding it to the Historical Society was that it would stay a museum and it'd be preserved that way. So in general, I agree with you. I think it's a complex problem, though unfortunately.
Paul?
For me, the intent was pretty clear because that's what the deed says. And so the question is, are we going to be willing to give them a new deed? And for me, I'm struggling with that. I think right now my answer would be no because of some of the other pressures that, you know, we've outlined over the past. Parking, it's right in the middle of the county campus. You know, there's a lot of, there's a, a lot of issues there. The other is success, the probability of success. And, you know, it's, I don't see a huge probability of success. You know, maybe I'm just being negative. But, you know, I've bought a few pieces of real estate before and I know what's involved with, you know, making that succeed. And I, I, I just don't see the possibility. I don't wanna chop anybody off at the knees, but, you know, I also don't wanna mislead anybody that, you know, from the, you know, notes or the discussion we've had or what we've heard about the Historical Society meetings and some of their hopes. There's great danger in us misleading them and them putting a lot of effort into something that we, we don't have the stomach for. And so that's where I am. I, you know, I would have liked to see the current arrangement succeed. It hasn't. Do, do I wanna see, do I have the stomach to, to, to see a commercial entity right in the middle of our campus with all the pressures that come with that? I'm not sure that's the best thing for, for the citizens of the county. And, and so that's where I am. I mean, we're gonna have to face the music, you know, by taking that stance. There's some risk to taking that stance in that probably, as John mentioned, county's gonna have to face either restoring it. I don't think it can do that. Or tearing it down, which is gonna be a major expense. That's not, that's not a, a small expense. So again, I'm being vague, but I, at this point, I just can't support. You know, unless there was some grand proposal that, that put all those issues at bay, but I, I, I just don't see it.
I, I want you to also think about something too, that if we, if we approved an amendment to the deed and took that provision out and our Historical Society found an entity to go into the building, help restore it and then maintain it in the future, that building, the facade of that building probably would remain the same. But the interior would be nothing like it's been used for the last hundred and fifty years. I mean, when you walk in there, you're gonna see computers and conference tables and file cabinets and it's gonna be used as an office space. My point is, is that the historical benefit, if the Historical Society goes as planned, would be to simply retain the ability for people to drive by and see that building in its present state, obviously restored, so that they'd understand what that building looks like for the last hundred and fifty years. Well, that was a suggestion made by the county administrator here, and Tina and I were talking about this several months ago, that if that building should ever be torn down, I would like to see the county look into building out close to the road and whatnot, a miniature replica of that building. That would still be quite large and whatnot, but nevertheless, a lot smaller than the building and whatnot. But it would be a replica of exactly the way that building looked like for the last hundred and fifty years. And it would be there for the next hundred and fifty years for the public to see what that building looked like when it was in operation. Now, that isn't the same as having, there is a building there, but it does accomplish the same purpose in that the public can drive by, see this building, understand what it looked like when they talk about the old jail. And so it's, it's kind of the best case scenario for if you're unable to, to restore, maintain the building, to at least have something that the public can relate to as far as what the history of that building was.
Well, what would be in it?
Nothing. Nothing. The replica would be nothing. It wouldn't be anything in, it would be so small that you wouldn't, you wouldn't occupy it. This would be a very small replica of that building, but it would be built to the same, what I wanna say? Not specification, but the same design and proportional, what am I, what am I saying, Scott?
I think scale was the word you were looking for.
Scale. Thank you very much. It would be a scale model, scaled-down model of the existing building. I just offer that because it's a way for the public to enjoy the, what the building looked like when it was in operation. Because if we don't do anything and the Historical Society is unable to continue that, it is gonna fall into the parking lot and there's not gonna be anything to see. And that is happening right now. It's unfortunate, but a, a big chunk of that has fallen, fallen off and it had been bent for the fencing that we put up, or that they put up. Whatnot, that would have been right out into the river, I guess. Terry, that's our comments. Before we take any action today, would you like to say something?
Yes, um, I know that Scott has sat in on a few of the little, our meetings that the group, it's kind of an informal, well, I guess it's not really informal, but a fairly formal group. I wasn't initially sitting in on those meetings until they, it was like two or three meetings in and then I started sitting in. Bill kind of heads up those meetings and it's a group of local people, people who grew up here also. Carla, who's an architect, who was, used to be on the Historic Commission Board with me as well. Carla is amazing. She does amazing things. Carla Haskell. Paul, you probably know her because she lives in Harbin. So, you know, I think initially we got together and we were like, looking at what can that building be? And there is a grant right now that we feel very strongly that we are going to get. We're actually the only applicants. It's two hundred thousand dollars. Last night, our little meeting, Carla, we actually got a new estimate of work to completely restore the exterior envelope of the building. So that was really nice to see. Which was naturally more than it was back when we had the cap assessment done in two thousand seventeen. But it wasn't as bad as I thought it would be. I was surprised. So we are working and some of the ideas that have been thrown out is that the building is a county building and we want it to be part of the county, to be used for the county. And we've got, there's some, been lots of ideas thrown out as to what it would be. The Historical Society, part of what, the last time we got together was that Historical Society would be the sheriff's office and the cell block would be still the museum part of. Because we felt that that was, was funny because we were like, what do people wanna see the most? That's what they wanna see the most. You know, that's what we take the kids through. They wanna see the cell block. And so it's, it's funny that, we were like, okay, we had the, lots of ideas for the cell block, what it could be used for, how we could display, use the cells actually for different individual exhibits. Lot, lot, it's just never-ending what's come up. The downtown, I keep calling, it's the Heart of Ellsworth group is also working with us very much with trying to come up with ideas. And they are working very closely with Main Downtown and all these other, and you know, Tara knows all about that. I can't really tell you much about that, but they've been very strong in helping us trying to figure out what the needs are in the county, how it can really be for the county. You know, county-wide project, not just Ellsworth, but what can our building be for the county? What other organizations? You know, one of the people that we've talked to is Jared up at the Hancock County Planning Commission. And he, he's been involved in helping us as well come up with ideas of how this building can be saved. We really feel that it's so important to keep it. And maybe historical not as much as, as a community effort, a community building. And, and, and that's kind of been our focus is saving the building because it's so beautiful and, and unique. But how can we find a new purpose and a new life for the building? I think for the deed question was that we weren't, in reading the deed, and I've got this file here also from nineteen ninety-eight, the legal file, and I was reading through it today of all the things that were said at that time when it was actually given back to us too. And it was interesting to see that, you know, there was a lot of back and forth and with the commissioners and how they felt even at that time. And I think they, they didn't wanna let go of it, just like today. But, you know, I think it's important to maybe look into the future and see that there is an option out there for it to be used for the community. And have, we want the county to be involved and, and, and help, helping us figure out a new life and how we can save it. We've, they already have the draft ready grant. We've been working on that a lot. We meet every week, every Tuesday night. And, and usually they're pretty long and we've got a really strong board that is working with this grant project. And, and also in behind the scenes, working on other grant ideas. And it's something the Historical Society, we never had the people to help us do that. So, you know, now we see these other people coming in that are willing to help and with these new ideas. And we're still looking at the original cap assessment. And I know we're going to, we want to meet with the county and show you our plan and show that to you folks so you can actually see what the vision is for the building and some of the changes that would need to take place, like a handicap ramp and things like that. But that's something we've even needed for historical. I think, you know, the building itself is relatively in good shape. I mean, the exterior envelope and the, basically it needs to be the brick and repointing and then basically it's going to be taking the roof off, replacing that roof, putting the slate shingles back on, rebuilding all the brick around the top. It's a huge project. But it, it can be done. And I think making it a community building. And I think we're still bouncing around ideas for the, for the inside. And when, and we're not looking at changing really the inside. Because, because the building's on the national register, there's still much question about whether or not, what we can do and not lose national historic status. So that's a big thing too. And we've been working with the state, working with, you know, national too, to come up with some answers for those questions as what can we do? What's needed in the community? The surveys that have been sent out to see what, you know, I know even Jared from Hancock County Planning said he'd love to be in our building. So, you know, I think that, that being downtown and being close and maybe being able to work with the county and, and share our spaces of that, naturally, we're looking at, you know, wanting to make some money as well to pay for the building. And to, to keep it up and have that income long-term down the road, long after I'm gone, you know. So it's, and we have some challenges with that because naturally, once we start, if we rent space, we're going to have to. It will change, you know, our, we'll be paying taxes. So, you know, there's a lot of income questions and we're still kind of working that all out with parking. We would, we've talked with the city, you know, about parking in the, you know, some designated parking perhaps in the parking area across the road. So really, there's been so many discussions behind the scenes with this project should answer a lot of questions. And I hope that we'll get a chance as a group to meet with the commissioners so you could hear all that going on, so.
Terry, I can tell you that we, we've been following the minutes from the meetings you've been having and so on. But commissioners in no way want to impede the Historical Society's ability to restore and maintain that building. But you've said on more than one occasion just now and whatnot about having other entities in there occupying that building. First of all, it won't be totally run as a historical exhibit and museum. And second of all, it'll be managed by an entity other than the Historical Society and the county. And I think that's the rub in the road and whatnot, that we, we want to follow what the other two boards have pretty much demanded. And that's that if the Historical Society wants that building, wants to try to restore it and maintain it, it's going to have to be run as, as an historical exhibit and museum. And it can't be given to somebody else or sold to somebody else or used for something else besides that museum.
Well, and Terry, you didn't, at no point did you, today, did you say that you needed a change in the deed. So that squelches, you, you know, that squelches, y- you know, my concern. I just wanna be upfront that if there needed to be significant changes, we may not have the stomach for. I hope you succeed and, you know, everything that you've talked about today. Um, and quite frankly, if you don't need a change in the deed, I'm not sure where we come in anyways.
Well, Paul, I've, I've.
There is discussion with that. They do wanna change the deed. Um, and you know, they have hired, well, not really hired, but there is a lawyer that has been in some of the meetings with a question on the deed, um, that they have gotten in to kind of answer some of our questions. So I can't really answer. I know that they do, looking forward, they would like to see, I think, a change that if someday there was another nonprofit that wanted to take it over, that there is that option. You know, I think that's, I think any of us, we wanna look to the future. And if there is someday when this society, say the society ceases to exist one day, we want to make sure that there is a future for that building, even though the society isn't there anymore. I guess, you know, we're looking to the future. And, you know, naturally, when you're spending, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars to repair a building, you wanna make sure that it's secure and safe down the road and it will always be there, that, that, that money has been spent and isn't going to go for nothing. You know, and I think that's a big concern. And even with historical, it was a concern for us that even a long time ago, before all of this, we were concerned with the wording and the deed because we felt that what if we did raise all this money to do this work? And the society ceased to exist. I mean, and then what happens? You know, what happens to our building after that? And, you know, I think it's like, it's like caring for your child is how I think of it. You know, you wanna make sure your kid is gonna be okay when you're gone. And that's kind of how we feel. And, um, and you know, that we wanna see it succeed.
I, I, I feel the same way. You know, I'd hate to see you pour all kinds of money and then us, you know, revert back to us and us say, you know, we can't, because the county can't maintain, let's be frank about it.
And I think that's our concern.
Yeah. But I, um,
Well, the problem is, is that I don't want to, I personally don't want to someday see the historical society walk away from the building, having, after they've transferred the ownership of that building to a we'll say an attorney's firm. Now that becomes, uh, you know, an attorney's firm, even though they might keep the facade similar to what it was. Or it may become another government agi- agency outside of county government. That is not what the commissioners wanted in seventy-nine. It's not what they wanted in ninety-eight. And, and that is, that is county property. And if, if, if you can't maintain that as a historical exhibit and museum, then we want the property back, quite honestly and whatnot. Terry, this is similar to, say you had a, a piece of property with a very large field and twenty years ago, a, uh, a gas company came to us and said, we'd like to put a trench in and put a gas line in and we'll restore the land. So you'd never know it was there. You said, okay, that's, that's, I'm, I'm, I'll do that. And then twenty years later, that company came back and said, you know, gas is envi- environmentally friendly. We wanna put solar panels on that land there, whatnot. We'd like to have a change in that, in that deed to do that. How would you feel about that? I mean, that's what's happening to us. You're saying, we're giving you a deed saying that run it as a historical exhibit and museum. And now you're saying, well, we may have to walk away from it, but we're gonna give it to somebody else who will at least preserve the facade. But it's not gonna be used as a museum any longer. And that's the problem I'm having today is that if you're not going to run that as a museum, give it back to the county.
It's still gonna be a museum. Um, it just won't be that we'll be using the entire building. Yeah. And I think that it's, it's a difficult situation because we think of it as, as our building that we own it, um, that is deeded to us. And if we cease to have this, you know, a presence there, then it would go back to the county. But we still think of it. I mean, we own the building. It's deeded to us. Yeah.
Terry, you did, you weren't given that building so that you could become owners. You were given the building so that you could become stewards of that building to continue to show it as an exhibit and museum. So, I mean, you may be technically the deeded owner. But really the intent there was for you to be the steward. And if your people are not going to, then that, that basically is contrary to what to two previous board of commissioners have. And quite honestly, we're not too excited about seeing anybody else in the building besides historical society.
Well, for, for me, they own the building. They have a deed to it. And for me, I'm not sure that we wanna own it because of the expenses associated with it. But if we are going, you know, i- if, if it is going to be, we're in line if they, if they succeed. You know, I'm not sure we're gonna have a choice. Uh, but, you know, to me, we gotta take care of the safety. We gotta see what comes out of this. I'm not ready to, to say hand it over because I'm not sure I personally, you know, because I, I know what that would cost. So, uh, my, for me, I don't wanna mislead anybody.
So, let me, let me remind you something. If, if we had never deeded that building over the historical society, the county would have owned that building. And at some point, we would have had to decide what's going to happen to that building. Now, if that, the problem with that is, is that the historical society has had forty years to restore and manage that building. And if you look at it today, it just simply is forty years more deteriorated than it was forty years ago. And so, the fact that we might end up getting this back, unfortunately, because they can't keep it run as a museum, is unfortunate. Nevertheless, it simply turns the clock back to what we had back in nineteen seventy-nine.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I think to certainly agree with today's discussion, we've, uh, I think made a clear, clear what our concerns are, that it needs to be maintained as a museum. Now, is it a museum that's a hybrid that we can accept? That's kind of the question. It sounds like Commissioner Clark's a hard no on that one. And that maybe there's, uh, more room for thought on, uh, Paul and myself's position, but it'd really depend on what gets proposed. I don't know. So, I mean, I, I just want you, I, I guess I, I mean, I'm agreeing with Bill that the intent of the deed is there and, um, you know, I think that our feelings are pretty strong on how the building's supposed to be used. Well, I, that doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean there's creative, that there's still some, I, I, I personally think there could still be some creative thinking on it to, to see how it can get used and still.
Has been amazing to see what has been come up with for ideas, um, for the community. Um, and, uh, it's, uh, it's exciting to see that it would be, you know, we still have a presence there, but so would you know, other nonprofits, you know, and other community based things, you know, because being, it's just such a cool place to be close to the library and, and, you know, everything else that it, you know, to be able to work within that with all these new ideas that, that we've come up with, um, you know, is going to be, and, and our hope is that it will be a community building. It's, you know, it, it will be a, something for the community to use. Um.
You keep saying that, you just keep saying that to me, but gentlemen, if that means we're going to have several other entities occupying the building, running it as something besides a museum, isn't that contrary to what the other two boards have said? Isn't that contrary to what we really want? Because it's, it's a building within the county campus owned, that was owned by the county and should be retained by the county, but it's not gonna be used as, as a museum. So no matter what, what twist they give us on the use of that building, I think it's misleading for this committee to believe at some point, they're gonna be able to occupy that and use the interior for something besides a museum. And to that end, gentlemen, I'm going to move that we inform the Ellsworth Historical Society that the Hancock County Commissioners would not approve an amendment to the old GLD that would remove the provision for them to operate the facility as a historical exhibit and museum. I think they, that committee needs to understand that is not a possibility. And so they can continue to work on that with this understanding and not be devoting a lot of time on something that's inevitable in the, in the future. Do I get a second on that motion?
If you said at this time, I would second it, just because that communicates our, you know, our intent to see, y- you know, no drastic changes, but, you know, if they can pull, I know it's been forty years. And if they could pull something together that was acceptable to all of us, then I'd like, you know, to at least listen to them. Um, so I, I, but I, I think it's important that we're clear that, you know, we have concerns and your motion does that. And I, I think if, if it said at this time, then I'd, I'd second that.
I'll clarify my motion to say that the amendment to the, to approve an amendment at this time to the old GLD, that would be my motion.
So I'd second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Terry, I'm sorry. Terry, you're, you're still there. The new damage to the building, have you and Bill had a chance to look at that?
Yes, I've been down, like, because I go by every day when I go to work. So, yeah, yeah. And then I called Bill first. And I think it was after one of the rainstorms we had. And I think what happened is all that water pulled those labs away. And Bill went up and took some pictures and I think he did send some pictures off, I think to Dennis and you guys, I think, I think he did, um, of what it looked like then. Um, I drove by the other day and it actually looked like there was a couple bricks laying there and that was new. And I think that probably happened past storm with the ice, because when it slides off a slate roof, that's what you get. So, um, yes, I have been down and looked at that. Yeah.
Is there any talk about what to do to mediate it for the time being?
Um, I think, because Bill was talking about, he was gonna get, I think he believed that the netting was catching what was coming. Um, so that was good. That was a great thing. And we haven't had a discussion yet about anything else. Because I just noticed a brick when I am setting in the netting when I went by yesterday. But, um, we have not had a meeting yet, um, and probably we'll call the insurance company and see what, and have them help us out to get that looked at.
Well, maybe this is, is just my perception, but I did never, I never envisioned the net to be a way to control all the bricks that fell out of it. In other words, you just don't allow them to continue to fall and as long as the net holds them, that, that would they have simply to keep, you know, a catastrophic failure from going into the parking lot or on top of some vehicle or somebody, you know. So, I don't, I'm just very disturbed over, that is significant damage compared to, at least in my mind, compared to the, the damage of the entire building. And if that's indicative of what's gonna happen to that building in the near future, which I thought would take years, I would think the, I would think the historical society would be very, very concerned about it.
Oh, we are. Yeah, yeah, naturally. Yeah, yeah.
Um, this is Carla Romano, um, here. I'm also a part of the, uh, committee. And part of the reason why, um, Terry, myself, and earlier Bill and Carla Haskell were on the meeting was to hope that we would be able to, um, organize a time to meet with the commissioners to talk about our progress as a committee. And, um, also to share the, um, the cost estimates and the current plans that Carla Haskell of Design Group Collaborative has put together for our first draft application that we submitted last Friday to the, uh, Main Downtown Center and National, uh, Preservation for Historic Trust. Um, that is where, that is the, um, two hundred thousand dollar grant that Terry referred to earlier. So our intention is, is that we would like to organize a meeting to present our facts that we have found. Um, and Terry did a great job of summarizing. Excellent presentation.
So, so I have a question. The, the grant that you talked about was two hundred thousand and then Terry, you talked about the cost estimate wasn't that bad. Can you, what is that cost estimate?
Carla has it. Yeah.
Yeah, we discussed it last, and that's, we.
You said that bad, can you, like, at least give us the magnitude?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, Carla couldn't be here today. Our, the, um, architect that is on our committee, she's not able to be here today. And so she was here earlier, but she wasn't able to stay on because she had to go back to work. So it is our hope that we can present all of our facts and all of our findings and all of the budget pieces and parts to let you folks know exact information of where we are at as a committee.
But you've mentioned the dollar amount twice. You're just not willing to give it to us at this point?
We, I, we don't, we don't have it in front of us. We were presented.
I, I, I'm gonna be blunt. You said, they said it wasn't that bad. Is it a million dollars or five hundred? I, I just look for magnitude. I'm not looking down for the last penny.
No, it's not that I don't, sir, it's not that I don't wanna answer. It's that I'm not prepared and I'm very hesitant to put out numbers that I'm not confident in speaking on. And that's why we wanted to have Carly here today, but she wasn't able to. We found, we just found out that this was an agenda item on the meeting yesterday. So.
Twice you've spoken about it, but I'll leave it alone. Thank you. You don't wanna answer the question. I get it.
So we could, we could, uh, look to seeing whether it could happen. It may be the second meeting in February. I'm not sure how, what that, that meeting's looking like, but that would be an option that we could look into.
I think it'd be really important for everyone to get together. I think it's something that we, it's long overdue, you know, and I think then you'd really see what's been worked on. And I think that's kind of what our goal was too, to really get together with a commission so they can see, um, all these little pieces that, that everybody's been working on. And I think that's kind of what we were hoping, that we would be able to set up a time right off. And because sooner the better, you know, it times is of the essence, so.
Well, Terry, I'm not opposed to meeting, but we have had, we've had attendance at all of your meetings since you first started. I attended the first couple. Scott's been there for those. We've seen the minutes that come out of those and whatnot. So, I mean, we're not totally in the dark about where you're, where you are and what you're doing. And so, but I'm, I'm not opposed to having you come and reiterate that, but, uh, don't feel that we're, that we're, uh, we don't know. So anyways, uh.
Bill's back.
Hello, sorry. Yes, I had an appointment earlier. Yeah, I would, I would have put the number between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, uh, to answer Mr. Parides's, uh, earlier question. Uh, that would be the ballpark. Yeah.
Is that, does that include the roof, Bill?
Yes.
That's the roof and the exterior?
Yes.
And is, so the grant would not take care of this? You'd be doing some other fundraising, obviously.
That is, that is correct. Yes.
Okay, perfect. That answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Paul, there was some discussion about reapplying in the future for additional blocks of two hundred thousand. Uh, I think Carla talked about over a period of eight to ten years, they could be getting blocks of money from grants and doing one side every couple of years or something like that. I don't know how accurate that was. Was he speculating or she knew something? But that was some of the discussion at one of the meetings they had.
Yeah, so, so my guess is that they would just prioritize the immediate needs for the first. So that makes sense. That answered my question perfectly. Thanks.
Yeah, I think it'll be a phased project. Um, it will be different phases and fundraising and multiple grants and, like any building that gets restored and been through that. Um, it will be a phased project.
Now, Terry, the two hundred thousand you're applying for now requires a what, forty thousand match?
This, I, you know, I don't, not working on that grant piece, but there is matches, but that can be matches in kind as well. And, and I know that they are working on that. Um, so, you know, I haven't heard a dollar figure yet either. Um, if, if there's any gonna be needed with the grant. Um, if if there's any going to be needed with the grant.
I have a sudden impression that there's only a certain amount could be in kind and some of it had to be actual cash. Is that, is that correct, Scott Atkins? Do you recall that in the minutes?
Uh, I'm not sure that there was ever an exact answer, but that would, that's great to hear that this is all being ironed out. And certainly, Terry, I think the ball is in the in the Historical Society's court with regards to coming before the commissioners. Uh, as you know, I'm, I'm more than supportive of of helping with you with your efforts as as far as as I can. And that includes sending up a a meeting. So I think if you could get things together, uh, send me, uh, send me over a a summary of your presentation. Um, with, you know, with notes and details, and I'll see the commissioners get that in advance so that they're educated and we go from there.
That's good.
Thank you, Terry.
All right. So now we're gonna move on. Uh, do we need a an update on the OSHA, really?
Well, we have a COVID COVID update update that we skipped.
Can we go to negotiations or do you want?
We were gonna go to negotiations.
They've been waiting patiently, so.
Okay.
So I'm gonna move that we go into executive session for the purpose of executive session under M R S A titled one section four oh five six D for the purpose of uh union negotiations.
Second.
Call a vote.
Aye.
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 Just adding the people who are in the waiting room.
All right, we're out of executive session and I'm happy to report that we have a tentative contract uh, with the corrections officers. Yeah, next on our list for today. Are we gonna get a COVID update, Scott?
Yep, I can give you a quick one. Um, obviously Beck and I are are all healed up back to work. Uh, other department heads uh, that were affected are back to work. I believe we have one individual in the R C C who is finalizing uh, the period to be out. Uh, had some little bit, little bit tougher butt with it than than others. And the last I knew, Sheriff's gone, but I think the S O had had one individual who tested positive the other day. So again, we're following the C D C recommendations and probably a little bit further just to be safe.
Scott and Rebecca, from your experience and whatnot, what's the likelihood of catching COVID again after you've had it once? Is is there a decrease or do you have any idea?
Well, I don't have any experience with it. I just um, uh, I I don't know. I can tell you personally, my daughter had it uh, early in the pandemic and she was just, uh, she's been an R N all this time and she was just exposed to her entire family who had it. And she didn't get it again. So she didn't, but but who knows, you know, I don't know. I've heard that people have gotten it twice, but
They have John, you've heard that, John?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know quite a few people who had it twice.
Oh, wow.
Oh, God, is there any relief?
It's done.
All right. So Scott, um, on our OSHA, do we need a?
I think those two items, if the commissioner and agreement, there's no need to discuss that. It's kind of a moot point now with the with the Supreme Court decision.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we said that. Okay.
Um, oh, back on the COVID, I did want to let you know, um, I reached out to Commissioner Parity last night, but late yesterday afternoon, I received a resolution that was going before the Baharver Council. And basically it's a request to, it's it's not a mandate to mask up, but basically sort of a hey, everybody, you know, things are getting kind of dangerous again. Let's mask up. And according to the news, I don't know if you've listened, but uh, I think the town of Bath, City of Bath, just adopted the same resolution. Um, Belfast, surprisingly, personal observation, um, did not. And so that's kind of a new new momentum, I think, here here lately. Um, I I'm certainly not encouraging anything on my end. I I you know, I have my personal opinion of it. Um, but I think it's something that we need to be cognizant of. And and another reason, as I said, you know, I think, I think maybe through February, and we'll talk about this a little later, but through February, maybe we stay remote. I think just for that reason, I think we met in person. I I think to set a good example, we we should mask up. And and I think this is probably more productive than sitting in a room with a bunch of masks on. So like, again, my personal opinion, you guys are charged. So all I have on that.
I'm in agreement that we should try to at least run this through February and see where we're at at the end of February. Uh, with where case counts are at.
Yeah.
I just had to pick up.
That's my longer meeting, though.
Yeah.
Seems to.
I had to pick up my uh, my kid at school up in Limestone because they tested positive. And uh, they're stuck over in their room now.
Yeah.
Being being left food outside the door kind of thing. So that's, I'm not kidding. That's how we do it here. The Wambackers don't uh, don't mess around. I drove all the way up to Limestone. On the while up at like four in the morning, I left and picked them up and then we drove back windows. I had, I was given a uh, New York Times article about driving with people with COVID in the car. And half my window down, half the window back here now. And I'll tell you, when I got home, I was one chilly, one chilly commissioner.
Little frostbite.
Did you put some bars on your doors and windows? I get an idea, Tim, that Tim, you might be able to work out a deal with the jail and people in there, but.
Only if they try to get out when they shouldn't be.
Yeah, right.
All right. All right. So um, now, uh, we're gonna go on to uh, our commissioners section.
Yep. And I think just the discussion on I I was trying to remember exactly what where we left it last time. I think the commissioners were gonna review the process and kind of.
Yeah, we hadn't really talked about uh, what uh, Paul had sent us and so Paul, why don't you uh, speak to it first since you came up with uh, some of the, some of the ideas here?
Okay, so, oh, we give you a little history. Before, we had a very formal process where it had numbers and, you know, some of those same questions, but with numbers and a scale and not much comment. So what we developed was we took that template and put it into that document that that I gave you. And verbatim, that's what the document was. Uh, we granted, we we only used it with one manager because we transitioned to the to that right when we changed managers. But it worked well because it was a conversation. And you know, the uh, the portion where you reached out to department heads, that was the chair who did that. Uh, you know, five, ten minute conversation tops. Uh, and then the chair would just sort of compile all those statements into a paragraph or two that said, you know, this is, this is what was said. And uh, what we did is a lot of times it was just bullet points so that you, the chair wasn't having to write everything, you know. Um, and it, I don't know, it worked well. It was, it was informal, yet formal, so that you had a document that could be in personnel file. Uh, and it was, um, you know, and it didn't stretch it out, you know, we kept it short and sweet. The review, um, the the portion that I can't remember if I left out or not, we always had the manager do a self evaluation using that same form before and we had that. Um, you you know, we had that prior to doing ours. Uh, which uh, that that actually came from the manager. He thought that was particularly particularly useful. He had seen that elsewhere. So I thought it worked well. It it um, you know, and and it was a, it was a, it produced a document that both the chair and um, the manager signed and therefore, everybody was in agreement, was in his personnel file and took care of, you know, duties on both sides. So I thought it worked well.
So when you, when you uh, took the um, the other members of the of the councils uh, information and consolidated it, was that part of it also kind of like a bullet point kind of thing or was it more?
No, what what I, I I wish I could show you a a finalized document. What I did is uh, I took that same form and then I had Paul Parity's comments, John Wambackers' comments, and Bill Clark, verbatim. I cut and paste it into that same document. The only compiling we did was uh, was staffed because we're trying to keep them anonymous, you know, protect their
Yeah.
um, their brothers.
Yeah.
But, you know, my comments were mine. And then, you know, if there was something, I don't think that'd be the case here, but you know, sometimes I'd have to 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 make some grammatical changes or that kind of thing. But I always check back with whoever made the comments. Um, and it was pretty straightforward. And and, you know, the thing to remember for each commissioner is you're not writing a book. You're you're, you know, it's a paragraph or two. Um, and you know, if people were upfront, if they didn't know, they said they didn't know, you know, don't make stuff up. I thought it worked well.
So what's your thoughts on 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 using the uh, the evaluation that Paul provided to us?
Evaluations are like funerals. You wait until them, you say the the good things about somebody, you know. Well, I I didn't like the form we used before. I I'm not sure what kind of a form short of a straight out narrative that I would use that I that really wouldn't be comfortable, but I I don't really care. If Paul believes that he has a form that that worked well of our harbor, let's give it a try. I'm
Well, and and more importantly to me is, you know, what's Scott think about?
Uh, in reading what you, what you presented, I I really liked it and I thought it would fit really knowing knowing my history with the with the other two commissioners and especially Mr. Clark, because actually what your proposal is exactly what you did. I don't know if it was the last review or the one before that. That I think I remember you basically saying, I really don't like this form, so here I wrote this out. And um, I do, I do have a copy of that. So again, I think all that that process is, again, it's kind of that hybrid where you address the same issues if you you want to, but it gets rid of that, you know, number system, which really doesn't apply to, I think, to positions such as mine. And um, and it allows you to uh, express, you know, your your full opinion. Yeah, so I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, and and the other thing is, it's, I didn't find it as a chair, I didn't find it too cumbersome on the chair. Because, you know, there's some evaluations that you do where um, you you know, the chair is spending huge amounts of time. It was mostly a cut and paste thing with the exception of the s- the of staff and the staff was mostly bullet points. I I mean, I I don't think it's productive to 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 give the chair another project.
And when you, when, so when when you did this before and you have the different, um, I don't know, skills or or different, you know, your numbers here, you know, like work skills, uh, relations with council, yeah, obviously some of these are uh, work attitudes. Did 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 people put in uh, reply just in general to different things and use these as uh, points to discuss, right? It wasn't like
No, it wasn't like you have to touch on this. It was just to get creative juices going.
Okay, that's right. So the other point too would be, so I assume we are also gonna want to um, would use the same uh, format uh, for Rebecca's uh, evaluation. Am I, am I right in saying that?
Well, one of the things that, you know, again, I'm new to county government or not that new either, new, uh, Rebecca really works for Scott, right? So shouldn't that evaluation be done by Scott?
Okay.
Always has been, hasn't it, Scott?
Yeah, and we talked about that even as early as yesterday, you know, when we're we're talking about this 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 line item here on the agenda. And yeah, I I said, well, you know, my my thought process is that you'll just have me go back and and I'll do one, I'll do one up for the next meeting so that we can get that one out of the way. Um, and and I think, again, we discussed this and she was in agreement um, with, you know, talking about it at the beginning of the year. Um, again, and kind of, you know, looking, as I talked about earlier, looking to maybe establish uh, first of the year goals oriented meeting. And, you know, so the our our reviews kind of rehash, um, you know, what what we've done and it also helps set you up for going forward. So that that's done, you know, in executive session and privately. And uh, we can always have that discussion about where to go, you know, forward. Um, in in our goals altogether, and maybe here's some goals that, you know, she and I have that we think that the county should, you know, should strive for and 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 try to include that in the some sort of a mission statement for the year, but yeah.
Yeah, but but on the subject of Rebecca, you know, I I I, to me, what I'm used to is that that evaluation is between you and she and that we're really not part of that. In fact, we should, you know, just for personnel reasons, I'm not sure that I would want to know what that is because I don't think I have a need to know. You know what I mean? I don't want to know what's in your personnel file unless I have to know.
Right. And so that part of that conversation is kind of, is a little bit more extensive than I do with the department heads. So uh, it's it's easy for me to do a review on her. I mean, and and it, you know, it's it's a glowing review. I know I already tell you. But the important piece, because we we talk each day. And so she knows where I stand and and I know where she stands on, you know, anything that's going on. Um, but from her position, which is again, a another uh, just another, you know, title removed from from the three of you, I think it's just as important that you weigh in on it. So that it just, it reestablishes, I mean, with the amount, the considerable amount of work that she does, you know, in in preparing for the meetings and and getting things going, um, and and helping keep, you know, keeping tabs and keeping me in line. I think it's important that that's part of the conversation in the review.
Yeah, again, I don't think we should be filling out a form, maybe in the, in the you know, uh, results that are, you know, but I I I don't want to get in that position where we're usurping
No. No, I try to
I don't think it's Rebecca.
Yeah, if you have something to say, and and I would like her to weigh in on this after I get done blabbing, but really what I'm looking for is for the commissioners to add something. And I'll always say, you know, Antonio was famous for it. I'd say, if you want that added, send to me an email format, what you would like added, and I'll put it in there with your initials afterwards.
Yeah.
You know, it is, I mean, it was, it was positive because if there's any issues, then it should be directed towards me. But yeah. Beck, any comments?
Oh.
But
No, no, except for that. Oh, let's just do that and get that out of the way. That just
Yes. So I think the next step in in Scott's evaluation is for him to take that form or whatever form we agree on, fill it out and get it back to us. And then uh, and then what we do is do ours. The chair compiles everything. And then we schedule an executive session to go over it.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so that's good.
So, yep, I'll plan on having uh, text done for the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, we'll just go from there.
Okay, so if you have it for the next meeting, then we'll do ours. And then so it'll, we'll do the sit down like in a month. Right?
The second, yeah, second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. So employed till then. That's good to know. We got a couple more house payment.
Okay.
All right.
Yep. Uh, it's, oh, we all set with the next meeting dates?
I hope so.
Yeah, that, what we were talking about before was was actually uh, the first meeting in March and we saw it last meeting and we had solved it.
Oh, okay.
So I'm gonna move to adjourn.
Wait a minute, just a second, hold on. Can I have just a quick second?
Yes.
Jeff McFaulen has a retirement party scheduled for February nineteenth, five thirty in Holland Community Building. By invitation only, if you guys By invitation only, if you guys do to get an invitation. Now, would you like me to attend and represent the commission? If so, I'll give him something from. The county commissioner's certificate or something. Or would you like to attend or?
It's fine with me for you to do that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm all set with that. You know, John's chair, whatever.
Yeah, no, I'm good with it.
Okay, Scott, would you get something, a certificate or or something? That the, and we'll get the commissioners to sign it as well, and I'll take that and present that to him the night of the, they're gonna have a. Some speakers and some presentations, so I'll, I'll present one on behalf of them.
Well, when is it? It's February nineteenth?
Yeah, Saturday the nineteenth.
Is there somebody in the office who can drop a quick resolution that we do at our next meeting?
That's, that's what I'm asking Scott to do right now. We have time enough to do something like that. Have it ready so that by the nineteenth, if he has it ready for the February first.
Meeting, yeah, just a simple resol- resolution.
We've actually already ordered a plaque for him, you know, the, the, the same thing that we did for. The last few that have retired, you know, just a simple. Thank you for your years of service, then it gets affixed to a piece of granite that was part of the courthouse that. Was.
Okay, so I could present that at the, at the retirement ceremony instead of the commissioners meeting, Rebecca?
If you want to, yeah. I I think that's what you did with Steve, right, McFarlane? Didn't you take his rate to him?
I I guess so.
I guess it's however you want to handle it, whether you want to do it.
Yeah, I'd like to have something to present to him that night.
That makes sense to me anyway, since we're meeting remote in February, so it's not like we're missing an opportunity to do it. With the three of us, so I'm all for it.
So, yeah, I'll use that then for the, for the presentation, Rebecca. I'll work with you on that. All right, that's all I have.
They work, work with that because I'm not allowed to do that stuff, so.
That's what, that's what she's gonna have. I second Paul's motion to adjourn.
Yep, third.
Yep, the vote.
Thank you.
Okay, Rebecca, I just sent you my file.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, folks. Day, thank you.
Thank you.